Then I will call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of school committee at 6:04 PM on October 12th, 2021. And hello to everybody and welcome to all of our viewers on WinCam. And let me just see, you can watch us live streaming on wincam.org/watch/education, or Comcast Channel 22, or Verizon Channel 38. Tonight's agenda includes communications from the school committee and administration, the student representatives' report, public comment, reports and discussion items, including an enrollment update and lessons learned, action items, including consideration of approval of the eighth grade DC field trip, consideration of approval of the French trip, consideration of approval of stencils for Lynch, and consideration of approval of minutes. We also have a chair report, the superintendent's report, future agenda items, next meetings, and an executive session and adjournment. So we will, we will begin with communications and announcements from the school committee and the administration. And first of all, for elementary school parents, please check your school newsletters for early release schedules this week because the 13th through the 15th is for parent guardian teacher conferences. I was late to my own today because I didn't check the schedule, so please check. We also have COVID-19 weekly safety checks that have started as of last week at Lynch and Morocco, and as well as some grades at McCall. And VO will be starting this week, and the plan is to start the rest of the schools, including the high school, by next week depending on the availability of kits. Our participation numbers have been increasing strongly, and basically trained nurses come to the school to collect nasal samples which are then sent back to the lab with results that come back in 24 to 48 hours. And no news is good news, so if you don't hear back about results, you can assume your student is negative. The lab can automatically retest an individual sample, so only positive cases are identified, and there's no quarantining of the pools. And you can still register for this program to help keep students and staff safe, so please check on the Winchester Public Schools website, your school newsletters, or at the front office of your schools for the paper.
Karen, can I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Will they be, they're not swabbing at the upper grade levels though, right? Are they still using the saliva tubes at the upper grade levels as originally planned?
I believe there was a difference, yeah.
Yeah, okay. You'd mentioned the swapping.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Parents should be prepared for the saliva tubes to come home at the middle and high school levels.
Middle and high school, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which they will then need to return.
Yes, that is correct.
Prepare something to drink before the kids start.
So they can get enough saliva.
It's the hardest part.
Yes. And then besides the safety checks, for school committee, we had our norms and goal-setting workshop last week on September 29th to discuss our norms and then also to think about the goal-setting process for the district. And I've included, well, I will send out a summary of our norms in, or shortly after this meeting. And we will work toward more goal-setting with Dr. Hackett as this month unfolds. And Dr. Hackett, did you have any announcements?
Just not really announcements, but really more of the communication to follow up on what you just shared. And I'm sure, so on the testing website, you can see, and I know there were some questions last time about participation rates at different schools. This is on the COVID-19 testing website, but you can see the comparison between October, as of October 8, and as of the last time we reported, which was at this, these numbers were at this committee meeting, at a committee meeting, September 22nd, 2021. You can see a substantial increase. I believe there were questions about participation or the signature of consent forms at Lynch, as well as, I think, Morocco, and also, I think also McCall. But you can just see that, for example, Lynch went from a 37% registered with the consent forms to 61%, so almost, almost a doubling of the form. So I think there's a combination of a lot of things. One, it's just people are talking about it, it's out there now more and more. And then also, as you know, was a webinar that just Pfefferman put on with Jen Markham and Jen Murphy, that I know we had about 70 participants on. So hopefully word continues to get out, and we'll continue to see those numbers rise.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we will move on to our student report.
Can we make one other announcement, just a reminder? Tuesday, November 16th.
Yep.
That is correct. So we will be having our MSBA kickoff.
Kickoff for the Lynch project.
Lynch Project kickoff. And it will basically be a whole day of events, three, with three meeting times, discussing the Lynch Project kickoff. Yes.
Just a quick question. Is that information on the website? Like, is there a description of the day, or will there be soon?
There, there will be soon. We don't have that yet because we actually don't have an architect or engineer onboard yet, but we are in the ninth inning of the designer selection panel process with the MSBA. And we hope that by the end of this month, we will have somebody selected and under contract that meets the approval of the MSBA. And then once we have that, we'll be able to roll out that, that announcement. But to your point, we might maybe formally send out like a save the date or something where we can at least kind of discuss what those bullet points are. We've tentatively reserved the auditorium at Town Hall at nine o'clock in the morning on that day, for those for whom morning is easier. And then we're going to do it again in the evening at the high school, perhaps around seven. Need to coordinate with WinCam on that. That would be introduce the team, go over the schedule. We really want to hear from Winchester residents about what they think is going to be essential for the project to be successful. And then during the day, the expectation is the team will be engaging with the administration here at Parkhurst, also some folks at Town Hall. And the Lynch LPA has also expressed an interest in maybe some breakouts with them. So we would hope to be able to make that happen as well.
One other question. Are we recording the public session?
We definitely will for the high school because WinCam has the facility there. So the present, the bones of the presentation will be very similar. If we're not able to actually record at the auditorium, and we'll certainly be taking careful notes, and then we'd be in a position to report that back in the evening. And I think as well as whatever the team learns during the afternoon.
That's great. I've had some people asking about it, so.
And I assume WinCam can see Mr. Nixon has joined us today at the side as well.
Yep.
Camera seat. So you're not just a voice in the world, Mr. Nixon.
That's right. Okay. With that, I will move us into our student report, and welcome our student representatives from the Winchester High School School Council, Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, everyone. We are so excited to be meeting with you all again, and we just want to say thank you for inviting us here again. So our return to school has continued to be amazing, and many annual events are finally returning. The class of 2023 is hosting their annual senior booing, and this is when students from all grades can sign up to boo one of the seniors. Many students enjoy this event because it gets them in the spirit of Halloween. The Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service Committee is currently recruiting volunteers to get ready for the MLK Day of Service scheduled for January 17th, 2022. This event is being co-hosted by the Connect and Commit Club and Winchester Public Schools Service Learning, and it is being organized by Ms. Eden Hoffner. The theme for this year is global citizenship. WHS's Got Talent is scheduled for November 23rd. All grades are welcome to attend and participate in this in-person event. The Cast of the Fall Play is currently preparing for their opening night, which will be December 3rd. They will be performing the play that goes wrong. Many teams are also getting ready for their games and races that they have scheduled for this week. The Student Council is selling merchandise with a new design. We have a sign-up form to preorder the sweatshirts, and we will be also selling them at the upcoming Spirit Fair.
All right. Hello, everybody. I hope you're doing well. To pick up where Elle left off, the Student Council had our annual breast cancer awareness fundraiser. We sold bracelets and ribbons like we've done in the past. And to further show support for the cause, we had a pinkout at Friday's football game. We'd also like to dive into Wim Block a little further. As you guys may know, students greatly appreciate having two Wim Blocks throughout the week. And it has been great to see students meeting to work on projects or meeting for clubs during this time. Students usually say that this allows them to free up time after school. Moving on, in terms of academics, sign-ups for the students to take the AP exams started yesterday, the 11th. And we're excited to see the turnout of students. To continue this train of thought, juniors have the PSAT this Saturday, October 16th. And although it's usually low-stress, attention seems to be a little high with the weight of National Merit Scholar awards. Along with the PSAT, college representatives have been coming in every week, leading up to applications. And moving on from this, I've begun our presentation. We, Elle and I have begun our preparations for the Spirit Fair, which to remind everybody is on November 20th, along with many other clubs. The response for an in-person Spirit Fair is definitely positive. We've already seen many clubs starting to design or order their merchandise. Now, to address the topic you asked us to bring up tonight, clubs and events. Overall, I would say that clubs and events have been off to a great start. We have seen some large clubs like Connect and Commit able to meet in person while still following COVID guidelines, and all clubs are now allowed and, allowed and permitted to meet in person. I'd like to extend this to events as well. Our personal cookie walk for Student Council has gone great, and we were able to adapt that by moving it outside and using gloves to avoid any contact with the food. We know we haven't had that many major clubs or events meet yet, but we're really excited to see how the rest of this will pan out.
And so one of the topics we discussed last meeting was lessons learned from the pandemic. Since then, we added a survey to the morning announcements for all students to fill out, and we received 76 responses. And Charlie right now is passing out copies of some of the charts that were generated based on the responses. About 80% of these responses were by students who were hybrid, and the other 20% were remote. As shown in the first graph, many students did not enjoy being out of school last year. The average here was approximately 5.5 on a scale of 1 to 10. Many students thought that teachers and faculty members handled online learning well, and the highest percentage of students' responses rated at a 7 on a scale of 1 to 10. When asked which programs were the most fun, Kahoot was definitely a fan favorite. Next was Quizlet Live, followed by GIMKID, Quizzes, Jamboard, Booket, Paradek, and lastly, EdPuzzle. When students were asked which programs were the most helpful for their learning, Kahoot still took the lead and was followed again by Quizlet Live and GIMKID. Next was EdPuzzle, and then Jamboard, Paradek, Quizzes, and Booket. These two graphs show that the programs that students enjoyed the most were also the ones that are most helpful to their learning. As you can see in graph five, many students think that their return to school has been great. When compared to the question about school last year, the average response increased by a significant amount. And finally, in the last graph, students have shown that they believe teachers and faculty advisors have been very helpful this year, with an average of approximately 7 out of 10. This survey shows that students are very excited to be returning to school fully in person. Students found many of the programs that teachers and faculty members used last year to be helpful to their learning and enjoyment. Students are also very thankful for the help that they have received from their teachers with their return back to school. We hope that this report has been helpful and that you all now have an insight of what school was like last year and how our return has been so far. We would now like to open it up to any questions or comments that you may have from last week or this week.
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you both very much for this. This is huge for me, and I'm really happy, I mean, we would all like to see 10 out of 10. But when I see the average, you know, 7 on a scale of 10, how do you feel your teachers or faculty advisors handled online learning? I gotta say, I feel kind of proud of that. I mean, this was an incredibly difficult year for everyone, and I know how stressed out parents were, kids were, our teachers were. Everybody had to leave a lot at the door, whether they were leaving the house to go to school, or teachers leaving the house to go to work. And so this is, this is really impactful to me. Something that I'm, I'm looking forward to asking at the end of the presentation tonight, because we have a lessons learned presentation, is I'm going to be asking administration, so given what we've learned, are there some practices that we might want to continue even post-COVID because we feel we're getting better outcomes or students are more engaged or what have you? And we need to understand what the costs are for that. Maybe they're cost neutral, maybe they are, maybe they aren't. I'm curious to know what, if DESI is probably not doing what you just did. I wish they would. I'd love for them to survey districts. But I thought it was interesting, I love a couple of these questions. Number three, number, I guess it was two-part for number three, or number four, which programs were the most fun and which were most helpful to learning? I can't help but look at kind of the similarity in those graphs, Dr. Ellen Emma. I mean, does it suggest learning can be fun? I think this is terrific. And I, I'm, I mean, Quizlet, I know that's been around for a while. I'm curious to know what the shelf life has been of some of these other programs, and if, if there was a significant uptake, right? Where more students using these sort of than ever before. And, and given the impression they made on students, is that something that we should seriously look to continue and to support? If there were other questions you were inclined to ask but just kind of didn't have time to put it on the survey, I would say ask away. Because, you know, you said at the beginning, thanks for inviting us, but in reality, you're here because you're our student rep. If there's anything you want us to know, we want to hear it. And if it's important to you and your peers, you should bring it to the table. If you've got other questions, you know, you want to follow up on, I hope you will, and I hope you'll share it with us. I commend you for it. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Could I just add on to that?
Mr. Hopcraft.
And say, I too liked it and echo everything that Mr. Nixon said. In particular, though, I think one thing you said which is really important is to be strategic and think about what's important to you, and design your questions to pull out that kind of information for us. You know, Mr. Nixon noted similarities of question three and four, and how it was significant that they were so similar in their responses. You know, maybe, maybe people learn better when they're having fun, or maybe learning can be fun, whichever way you look at that. You know, Elle, you also noted the difference between one and five. And, and so, you know, seeing the difference, you know, so in one case, they were, they were very similar, and the other case, we're seeing, you know, quite an improvement from last year to this year. You know, those, you know, the way you, that you put this together and you're able to compare the different answers pulls out a whole nother level of insight from just the answer. And so I really appreciate that. But I think Chris, Mr. Nixon's point about, you know, what's really important to you guys, and figure out the questions you can ask, and maybe the pairs of questions that will pull out whether things are changing or the same or whatnot, and bring that to us. Because that, that'll inform a lot of what we do around the table. But thank you. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Definitely keep that in mind.
Yeah. I also commend you guys for doing this. This is really interesting. I'm actually surprisingly pleased to see how well one actually turned out. I think that a lot of, particularly the adults, would have assumed that would have been skewed towards ones. So the fact that people, students were finding last year meaningful, and that there were things that they, that kids did feel like they got out of the year, I think is really interesting. And I wonder how much question three and four played into that, was using different ways to reach students and finding things that you were able to connect with your teachers with and your curriculum with were contributed to how well that they felt the year went, even though it wasn't an extraordinary year. So I thought that was just really interesting to see. And it also, I'm glad to see that kids are transitioning well back to school this year, and that they feel like they're able to sort of slide right into where they were before. Because a lot of the, a lot of the students you go to school with may have not even barely been in a high school building yet. So the fact that they feel like this year is going well is, is nice to see. I'd be curious to dig deeper into some of these, too, as your year goes on, to understand what's contributing to how well the year is going. Is it just being back in person, and are there other things that are helpful and supportive to you and your fellow classmates this year?
You could definitely look into that, yeah.
I was just wondering if you had a breakdown of the different classes, or if you saw any differences between the, between incoming ninth graders, or...
Oh, we actually didn't. But I, we were talking about that, and it might be like more effective to see like, how like the ninth graders compared to even like the 10th graders, because they had the middle school experience. And also, maybe even sending out separate surveys for those who are hybrid versus remote, like that might get some different feedback, too. So we could definitely do that.
That was one of the topics we brought up at last week's Student Council meeting. So we'll definitely look into that for you guys.
Yeah, that's great. And I just, I really appreciate that you put together the survey. I've seen the, in the morning announcements, I've seen the announcement for the survey, and I've been wondering, oh, I wonder how that's going. So this is great to see that you're already pulling together some of the data and that you've gotten a good response. And then I also really appreciated your questions about how your return, how the return to school has been, and how helpful have your teachers and faculty advisor been this year. I think that's great to see that the responses, that the response about how it's been going for transitioning back this year has been pretty, has been pretty positive, and that the teachers and faculty advisors have been very supportive as well. So, thank you so much for putting this together.
I also appreciate what you guys are doing here. It's so helpful to have the feedback directly from the students. Are you planning on doing more surveys throughout the year?
Yeah, we definitely could.
Okay.
And then I would just wonder if, if with that, you thought about allowing for some open response, just so people could kind of give some more detailed comments. I think the, the data here is very useful, but then also sometimes that's where you can get some of the specifics of what people want to say, and it can kind of give them that forum to do that. And, and those can sometimes be helpful as well.
Mr. Hopcraft?
Just had one other thought, just a suggestion. If, if you're interested, if you like playing around with data on this sort of thing, I assume you probably have, like, you can export an Excel sheet on this, I imagine?
Yes.
Yeah. So the other thing that might be interesting is to look at sort of what they call cross tabs between some of the charts. So it would be interesting to look at the people in the bottom half of chart one and see where they moved in chart five. And the only reason is that while the trend is definitely positive, someone moved down. And so it'd be interesting to know, was that someone who was higher up and is having a really hard time, or is it the person who was in, you know, row two that just sort of slid backwards one? You know, so if you like sort of geeking out on that kind of stuff.
We could also look like how the programs like compare to that, like look into which ones they liked.
Yeah. There's just a lot of great, great insight you can pull out of. You know, there's data, which is, you know, the, what you got back from the results. And then as you're, the way you described how you're comparing these, you know, bring out the insights from that data that's really valuable.
Have you closed the survey now, or are you still accepting responses?
Yeah, I think we're still accepting.
It was still there this morning.
Yeah. I was just wondering how much longer you were going to leave it open, because it's still a smallish sample size. And I was wondering if you were going to try to incentivize or get more responses back.
Yeah, we could definitely try to push it more if that's something you guys would be interested in.
It's, as long as you have the bandwidth to keep looking at it.
By the time you're done, you can get independent credit and statistics.
Exactly.
If you do all what's been told, said to you tonight. So we'll look forward to seeing all that data.
That's right.
I'm sure after tonight being broadcast on WinCam, our followership here will drive those numbers for you.
That's right, that's right.
If that doesn't work, I don't know what would.
Have you filled out that survey?
You've seen the Nielsen's on this school.
That's right. And I guess I'll also be interested just to see the programs that had, that the students had listed as fun and helpful. I'll be curious to hear how it ties back with what our staff think as well. So, thank you. Oh.
You just gave me another idea, which is, it would be interesting to ask the staff to take another version of this, so you don't mix up your data. But, but to do that comparison between what does the staff think versus students. But that's not necessarily in your court.
That is Dr. Ellen Emma. Yes.
I'm gonna need a sabbatical leave to get this all done.
So, okay.
Nice job, guys.
Great job.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Keep those.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
You, too.
You, too.
Have a good one. Okay, with that, we can move on to public comment. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes and is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or, or of school committee business. Any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name, address, and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. I'll just repeat, we're offering in-person public comment. You can sign up on the clipboard outside the room with the requested information. Or we are also offering remote public comment with registration 24 hours in advance. And we ask remote registrants to please turn on your camera, give your names and addresses, which is consistent with our in-person process. Dr. Hackett, do we have any persons for remote?
We do not.
Remote public comment.
Nobody in person.
And nobody for in-person. So with that, I will close public comment. And we shall move on to reports and discussion items. No Mr. Lynn?
What's up?
No Mr. Lynn yet?
No.
Okay. All right. So we will begin with an enrollment update by Dr. Hackett.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good to see you all. So the, as you know, because you've been doing this for a while, the October 1 enrollment count is the official enrollment count that the Department of Education requires us to submit. That number, in fact, determines a lot of things, including the amount of Chapter 70 money that, in part, the amount of Chapter 70 money we'll receive in a following year. But it's also the data that go on the website for the Department of Education in and around the school profiles. So when we're just comparing ourselves to any other school system, or just looking year over year, it is always the October 1 date that we go by. So we have waited until this time to bring these data forward. We also wanted to make sure that we had a chance for, kind of, for lack of a better term, the dust to settle on the opening of the school year. As you know, going into this year, there were a ton of unknowns. Last year, it's hard to believe in some ways. Sometimes it feels like it was like yesterday and I wake up in a sweat. Other days, it feels like it was three years ago. But last year was the year when we were doing hybrid learning, we had full remote, as you know, we had many school systems not unlike us, had students who, and families who made the decision to not participate in either, who may have homeschool their children, who may have gone to private schools with their children, who may have even moved out of state, and maybe even out of country in some cases. So the numbers that we were going into this year in terms of planning in any school system would have been difficult. And I know that that was certainly the case here. The problem with that is it timed up with your budget process and every school system's budget process such that you had to really kind of assume some things that were just not known. It's hard to measure what parents' intentions would be. I know that principals did reach out last spring to contact families who had not shown up either in full remote or in hybrid, to kind of just gauge what people's intentions were. I think in some cases, perhaps it would be the case that some parents may have been kind of hedging their bet a little bit. And as you know, as a public school system, we can't say that we have a deadline on registration. We are open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If, if a family moves into town, they are automatically registered. So there was really no way to say that this is the date we need you to register by. If you're not registered by then, so that we have a solid number, clearly. So as you know, 85 or so percent of any school department's budget is its people. And so it is a driver, certainly in, in determining a budget, year-over-year budget. So with that, to share with you, these are the official October 21 enrollment counts. You will note that this does not include pre-school. And the main reason why is because you won't find that also on the DESI site in terms of the overall actual enrollment. This number does not, also does not include the number of kids who are out of district place, or maybe in a private placement that they are receiving special education services for. So these are not all the resident students we have. These are the students who have shown up currently in our doorstep. I can tell you that just looking back... I can tell you that just looking back over the last few months, a couple of months or a few weeks, I should say, these numbers have remained pretty consistent. So we feel relatively comfortable that this is where we're at. This total I'm just adding up real quickly is not accurate, so I'm going to real quickly. And if you could just check my math on this, Mr. Nixon or somebody who might have access to.
I was actually just gonna ask, the the link that was in our packet is now broken, so that file that we saw earlier, I just can't access. Wondered if was, was that original file? I mean, it's not as nice graphically as this one, but should, is that still available for us to go to or were you not?
Yeah, well, I did share this presentation with you too and it would be the same numbers, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Okay, it's in.
Nothing for me from the live link in our, in our packet.
It's not working for me.
I think the one in the packet was the September numbers.
Right, it was the September numbers, which you'll find in your packet right now though, and Mr. Nixon, in the um in the actual drive that you're, that you're shared with, the October 1 date uh enrollment is in there.
I'll go hunting. Thank you.
So the question became for us, um you know, we know that there's a percentage of students who do not return. We we have a general idea who they are. We don't necessarily know why. We don't necessarily know whether or not they are planning to come back at some point in time. I I think the concern that I I would share, my concern um is that it's hard to know going into next year whether or not we're also going to realize some returning students. So as we plan for next year, we have some of the same unknowns, I believe, that we have this year or had going into this year. Because some families may be, depending on the grade level, maybe at a point where there it is a natural decision point. For example, eighth grader is going into ninth grade. Or sometimes you see it with fifth graders going into sixth grade, depending on the programs that they're looking in terms of placements, that there are times when you see that attrition happen. I'll also share with you at the high school, uh anecdotally, um the number of students that were accepted by um our technical school were, was much higher than it has been in previous years. So that's good news for our students who want to go there, but it also impacted our numbers. So there are a lot of things in these numbers that we still have to tease out and drill down into. That's not the purpose of this conversation. We're really, tonight, just wanted to share with you what is our October 1 count. And uh we are administratively already following up on some of the questions that I just posed. And I'm, and I'm sure that you will have some and there'll be, uh there'll be more. But our 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 hope is that um we will have a good sense, because budget process does start relatively soon. We'll have a good sense fairly soon about kind of how are we thinking about the planning numbers for moving forward? It's it's just obviously a difficult set of circumstances coming out of COVID um to really know for sure if these numbers are entirely stable. This slide just shows you a couple of things. One, you can see the blue bar is the actual October 20 enrollment. So October 1, 2020 would be the actual enrollment count. That would have been last fall. October 2021, the numbers that you see are seeing tonight, is the orange bar. So by grade level, you can see what our enrollment looked like. Again, obviously, these are numbers moving forward. But you can see kind of by grade level where there is some stability and where there was some um changes, some delta. There are a couple of grade levels in particular that were um a little bit surprising, I think, for people who, I've just administered, we've worked through this. The gray line is the, uh there was a projection done for budgeting purposes in May of 2021. I've, we pulled that projection and as you can see by the, with the gray line, just showed where by grade level how the actuals compared against those projections. And then the second, the the other line, the yellow line, is us taking the October 1, 2019 enrollment, enrolling those students two years forward, right? So in 2019, we had, that was pre-COVID, that was a 1920 school year. I was just curious about if nothing had changed at all and these students had just moved forward to grade levels, what would those numbers have looked like?
With a sur, can I just interject? Like with a survival ratio of 100%?
Yes, with a survival ratio of 100%. No changes, no in, no out, absolutely not a cohort survival method. Just looking at the actual raw numbers so that we, just because I think it provides a little bit of a sense of what it might have looked like, given the fact that our population seems to be relatively stable. I mean, we've, we, I think the projections that have been done have kind of held true. So just kind of taking that idea that what would have looked like if nothing had changed at all. And obviously, we can only start that yellow line from grade 2, who would have been, those students would have been kindergartners um at that time. So you can kind of see a couple of things stand out. Um certainly, grade 8 stands out. And um that's a conversation that Mr. Lynn and I have been having, just really trying to track down uh where those students might have gone, what some of those decisions were uh related to why they either, um either did they move, did they go to private school? And then kind of what is the plan for next year, right? Because that would be a year when some families might look at a private high school. So I think it's an, it's a, it's one that we really have to keep our eye on. Because it would not surprise me if we actually recover more of those students going into ninth grade than what we're showing we we essentially lost for this school year. So that is, that those will be data that that we will be looking at. And then you can kind of see while there was a drop in from 2020 to 2021 in grade 7, the actual projection was relatively close, right? In both the just roll forward October 19 as well as the May 21 projection. Almost, almost uh rate spot on in terms of those two projections being equal. And then really just off from what the actual was for October 21. So that was a, apparently a grade level that we actually saw would have potentially projected a drop in. And so part of this conversation and part of the work that we need to continue to do is how much of this is natural attrition? Because the overall enrollments as projected were starting to show leveling off at minimum. And then slightly kind of declining K through 12 overall because of the leveling off that was taking place. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to answer. Again, this is really a high-level overview, giving a sense of trends. I try to look at it in a couple of different ways so that we could just get more to stimulate as much conversation and thought uh around questions and ideas that you would like us to go back and take a look at.
I have a couple, uh if the chair would allow, but the first is a puffball, easy question.
Yes.
Could you go back a slide, Dr. Hackett? Just in the interest of public consumption, remind those watching tonight why the numbers, there's some numbers that are not here that are, that are reported to DESI that show up on their website, and that's Winchester resident and Winchester public. Can you just remind people what those are?
Sure.
Why they're not on this grid? And then maybe just a brief, again, regular annual recognition that our pre-K numbers always change throughout the year because we have kids who age in and become eligible.
Correct. All right, so trying not to mess up a puffball question because that, that made me nervous right out of the gate. Either set up for failure or set up for me knocking it out of the park. We'll just see how I deal with it. In order of the question, the uh, there are two numbers that are, are, that are sent to DESI. They do not show up in the total count though. So when you go to the DESI website and profiles, you're not going to see two numbers, which are Winchester resident and Winchester private. The Winchester resident are students that are, are students of special needs who are outplaced in either collaboratives, collaboratives or residential placement. And then the Winchester private would be students who live in town and they receive services from us through special education. It might be speech, it might be OTPT, it could be a number of um services that they, that they have access to because they live in Winchester, even though they're attending a private school. We still provide those services.
And so just point of information, I think that they actually call it Winchester public, but you've described it i- in the private frame, right? I think the grid says Winchester public.
Correct.
It does say Winchester public.
Yes, it does. Yep, thank you.
So, and so then, and then so I just want to be clear then, so students are in that second group, Dr. Hackett, that kind of Winchester public-private group, they're not being double counted anywhere.
Correct.
And so that is, as I understand it from the October 1 numbers, a substantial number of kids. So pre-K through 12, it's over 60 uh for a Winchester resident. And in the second category, it's a little over 50 students. Is that about right?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And there are also 72 pre-K students or preschool, like I do call pre-K students who are, as you know, four sections here at Parker's and two sections at VO. And the total right now is 72 and 71, actually. So what can happen over a period of time, as Mr. Nixon, I think, was alluding to, is as students age in, because it is a rolling enrollment. So as students age, are then age appropriate, they are able to enroll into the program. Keeping in mind that we generally, I think, uh and Mr. I can correct me if I'm wrong, but we try to keep a 50/50 balance between our community students who are like peers, students, along with the students who are actually in need of of integrated pre-K. I don't know if you want to add to that, Pam, or not, if I have to put you on the spot.
The numbers are pretty accurate. I think first what you're speaking to is the importance of the day count. That it's a day count as a reflective of October 1.
Exactly.
So it could be less September 30th and it could be more October 2nd. So it's just that snapshot. So they are not double counted, but the important piece to think about is that what we call Winchester resident, our students that live within the district are entitled to equitable proportionate share of funding and how we track that number. So that number is a reflection of students. It becomes very confusing. They do not attend Winchester public schools that have the right to access services. Winchester, our tracking system internally refers to Winchester public as students who might be attending schools out of district that are fully accessing support at a school outside of the, outside of the confines of the community.
Right. And and if I can just quick follow up with respect to pre-K, am I right? In any given year, we might see that enrollment approach 90 or more kids, right?
Correct. It's, it's typically, preschool typically starts a little bit lower and picks up steam through, through the end of the year.
Right, thank you. So then can I follow up with the, maybe the, some, some much a question or a comment, but the second just point I wanted to make. Committee members will remember last fall, right, as we were, I think it was first, second week of November, we were beginning the conversation around enrollment as the precursor to the budget discussion. And Dr. Evans had included a line in her enrollment projections that was essentially representing those kids who were absent due to COVID-19 that we believe were out at private school, parochial, and that we thought were coming. And my, my recollection from those conversations is admin, in fact, did reach out, perhaps through principals, to some of those families. And on the basis of some number of conversations, I don't know how many, there was a number that was kind of put forward to the school committee to suggest X number of families can be expected to come back. So I, it would be helpful, I think, Dr. Hackett, to revisit that. As I see Mr. Lynn has come in and I'm suggesting more work for him, but if principals are able to reach out to some families for, with whom there was contact in the spring, for those kids who haven't shown up, that might be helpful. Or alternatively, as I, as I think you've suggested elsewhere, you know, a comparative Aspen run, right, between 19 and 21? Kids we knew were here and then weren't, and then are they back or are they not? There's some interesting ways to go about figuring out like who's, we can count who's, we can see where we're short of what the projection is, but it would be interesting to figure out who are these missing kids.
Right.
I like the chart. It's very helpful.
Mr. Hopcraft?
I'll, I'll just comment, so I'm trying to look at the chart and process it in my mind. If I'm reading it right, looking at a blue bar from one year to the orange bar of the next year, with the exception of the, the sort of bookends, K to 1 and 11 to 12, um there's declining enrollment in every category, in every grade level.
Correct.
And we think that's as a result of the pandemic.
Yep, except, yep, ex, right.
Second and third gained.
That's within the same year. If you look at the year prior, you know, from first grade, the blue bar to second grade, the orange bar is flat or, or lower in just about every one of them.
Say that again.
So as I, as I, if I'm reading it right, um looking at students who are in, you know, first grade and the blue bar going into second grade and the orange bar, that looks actually pretty flat. But in most cases, the blue bar in second grade to the orange bar in third grade goes down. And you see, and that repeats throughout almost every year, except the first and last year. So it just, it just seems like it's a fairly significant number of students that are missing.
Also a drop from 8th to 9th, if I'm reading that right.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, almost every one of them it does. 6th to 7th, 7th to 8th, 8th to 9th. 9th to 10th is about flat. Yes, they're flat or declining in almost every, you're going from one year to the next.
Right, which primarily would be the effect of students who did not return. But also along with some, what I think is, I think, which is what we're trying to tease out, is just natural attrition that we would have started to expect to happen. You know, I think the difficult position every school system was in last year going into this year, including Winchester, is that what you, what you could not do is show up in September and have a lot of students show up that you didn't expect or weren't allowing for, and then be in a situation where you're trying to hire staff in September and get classrooms together. So, I mean, you, every school system really did have to hedge their bets about how many students were going to come back. And in some cases, really almost had to expect, not to call it the worst-case scenario, but to expect the scenario where every student came back and be able to allow room for that to happen. And um, you know, so that, you know, that had to have been, and it was not obviously here, but that had to have been part of your budget deliberations at the time. Because it just would have been poor planning to have caught yourself short going into um September with, without enough staff.
Dr. Hackett, to that point, I don't know if you can speak to it, but last spring, there was some back and forth about the number of sections we were going to have at the elementary level. And so that got involved in our budget process and when it went to town meetings. So I just don't, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that based on what our October 1 count is and what those sections are looking like numbers-wise and just any thoughts you might have there.
So I believe the total section is 110. And I will, what I will tell you is that when I arrived in July and we continued to look at the numbers, we did have three positions that we kind of placed on hold, um for lack of a better term, and didn't want to hire until we had a better sense to see whether the numbers were going to start to trend up. So those positions ended up not being hired. So that would have gone from, I believe, what at that time was 113 to 110, but I'm not sure exactly what the conversations were publicly either. But we, um, we were at, I believe, we're at 110 right now.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, so we actually went from 111 to 110 because town meeting did not support our budget at 113. So I think, I think what happened is administration was just out of an abundance of caution, still sort of holding some funds in case we needed to hire that 112th and 113, 113th teacher. Thankfully, we didn't, given the budget constraint. So if I read it, if I understand it right, we're down one teacher from what was ultimately voted in the budget at town meeting.
If, if what was voted was a 111, you're saying?
Well, of course, it's one big number.
Yeah, right, right.
Does how.
Right, exactly, right, fair point.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we had argued what finance committee, I'm asking Mr. Brady, who was part of that discussion at the time of ThinkCom, but what they had come forward with was a budget that supported 111, and we had asked for that extra money for 113 with the understanding that if, in fact, we didn't need to hire those teachers, we'd come back in the fall at town meeting and give that money back.
And it's, appears to us, and we're new, uh Mr. Rose has been on the job not too much longer than I have. I mean, I've been on quite a bit longer than he has, actually. We, it appears to us that there was a, a placeholder of money held, I believe around $130,000, which clearly would not have funded um three positions. It wouldn't have funded necessarily even two, but probably was held for that purpose of just in case we did see that increase in the enrollment over the course of the summer.
Mr. Hopcraft?
So, so given the variability of projections, I think um the committee did absolutely the right thing to advocate for that. And it turned out, it worked out, and so that's good. What I'm curious about though is, and I can't quite read the bars on the right, but I think the first two of the blue bars are October 2020 actual to 2021 actual, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That, what, what, I guess what's striking me is I was talking about the different bars throughout there is, is that Winchester has been one of these towns that has had increasing enrollment year over year. And it looks like this year we've had decreasing enrollment. And so it causes me to wonder, um, is that a different trend? Or is this typical of other districts because of COVID? Are we all, you know, people taking their kids out of school, homeschooling, is that the effect that's happening? Because that affects a lot of the space needs and other things, you know, i- is this an aberration? Or do we think this is the beginning of a, a different trend?
And that is the question.
Okay.
It's exactly a question. So I think to the extent that we can kind of figure out the students who have not returned, not where are they, we didn't lose them, they're somewhere. And is there any intent to return? To the extent that, you know, that's a little bit more of a kind of a subjective data set for us to do, because family situations change. I think the question that, the bigger question for me, to your point, is I, I really don't know whether or not it might be worth having, getting a little bit consultant help and having someone come in and really look at our, our cohort survival rate and really see whether or not that rate has been calculated for these projections. How many students were born five years ago in town that show up in our kindergarten? And it's really called, unfortunately, for lack of a better term, but it is called the survival rate. Did they make it to kindergarten or did something else happen to them? Looking at that trend, at that trend over a period of time, and you kind of calculate it for each grade level to see what happens. So for example, you see a little bit of a bump from kindergarten to one, historically anyway, because there are private kindergarten options available, families take that option, and then they enter their children when they go into first grade. So I think it might be worth kind of resetting, for lack of a better term, that, that those, those survival projections, to see whether or not we could potentially be looking at another trend. Although keeping in mind that we still have the impact of, of COVID in last year.
Right. It, it strikes me that, that would be interesting. Whether or not you do that, I wonder if, checking with our peer districts, if, if they're seeing a similar thing, then reason might say there's some broader thing happening, like a global pandemic, and then I would be less worried. But it, it strikes me that the, that the factors that I think have been driving growth in our town haven't changed. And, and so strong schools, you know, there's, you know, building projects, there's stuff happening. And so I suspect it, it would, it's related to some external shock like a pandemic.
Right.
Which we might be able to validate enough by looking at, you know, some of the peer districts. Of course, I love data, so I don't want to stop you from doing all the other, but if that, that sounds like a lot, I'm not sure.
No, I mean, I think it's what we have to do.
Good. Okay.
So I would support Mr. Hopcroft as well, that I think that a deeper dive into some of this enrollment data is really necessary right now, understanding that the pandemic can affect it. I'm interested to find out where some of the students have gone and if we predict that they're going to come back in a period of time.
Right.
Because I get the sense that if, if somebody has enrolled their child in a private school at first grade, they may stay until they return at middle school. So while we may not see growth in the next year or two, we could see a bubble down the road where they decide to come back to public school.
Right.
By middle school, where things have settled down a little bit. So I guess I'm concerned not only about the year-over-year, but sort of redoing our five-year projections as well, understanding that we have a couple of new housing projects opening up.
Yep.
And, and the data has just gotten that much more complicated with COVID. So, so I'm in full support of sort of taking a deeper dive into this and really understanding where we're going, because when we don't need the teachers and we haven't budgeted for it and everything works out, that's great. But if we need ten extra teachers in September because we're surprised by a large influx of students, that's a lot harder problem to deal with.
It absolutely is. And I think also, kind of related to that, if you know you're growing, you make different decisions about personnel, right? You, you're willing to live with maybe smaller class sizes for a period of time because you know that eventually the kids are going to come. And what you don't want to do is get into that situation where you just cut, 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 and then you know it's going to happen three years from now. And then all of a sudden, you've got to come up with eight positions going into a, going into a budget, which is, you know, is.
An incredible impact on the budget, on the school budget.
Right. Right.
So I guess I'd be concerned about, about looking at these as just this year's budget and this year's implications or even COVID implications because, because of the phenomenon you just explained.
Right.
Can I put a finer point on Ms. Bergstrom's comment, which I support a hundred percent, that the housing developments that are actually happening now, for which we presume there is still strong demand, are going to bring students into our district by the fall of twenty-three. I'm happy to, you know, maybe circle back with Mr. Zekely to see if there's any substantial update after his last presentation to school committee in May, but that was, that was very detailed. We've modeled what the impact of River Street would be. We know students are coming from Cambridge. We've got Upper Forest on the back of the old, you know, General Mills property behind the veil at, where Vine Street and so forth. So we know we have significant number of kids coming into the district.
Those are still the only, the only ones that, from Housing Partnership, those are still the only ones that are on Converse Place would be the, and it's not as significant as Cambridge or River.
And so what I worry about is that, so I, I feel like there is some, some wave coming. Hopefully, it's a wave with a lowercase w, but there will be some wave of kids coming from those developments. And if, if this is more of a momentary thing, where we're seeing a depression in our enrollment, is that going to snap back at the same time? And might we actually find ourselves with a double win?
Right. Exactly.
So, committee, you know, we talk a lot about our tenure facilities master plan. The committee may remember that that was the summer of seventeen. We projected enrollment growth at a five-year timeframe and a ten-year five, ten-year timeframe. The five-year projection was actually for this year, for this very chart, October one. And we are today well below that target that was projected by the master plan. But it's very interesting. If you go back and look at where we were in year three, remember now this is year five, we were well on our way. We absolutely grew in year one and we grew in year two and we substantially. We had projected, I think, thirteen percent enrollment growth, I think, at the elementary level. We were more than halfway there by year three. And then COVID hit in year four. So I, to Ms. Bergstrom's point, trying to look at things at a longer, sort of, more broadly, right? Longer timescale and not just focus on any one year. Given how thorough we were in the master plan and given, to Mr. Hopcroft's point, the drivers of enrollment in Winchester, which is exactly what the UMass Donahue Institute spoke to, they looked at what's bringing families with kids to Winchester and its Middlesex County and its job opportunities and finance and, and healthcare and proximity to Boston, and yes, it's the great schools and it's, I mean, it's many, many things. We projected an enrollment growth in the master plan that the UMass Donahue Institute came in and looked at from a completely different frame. And they came up with a high and they came up with a low. They both represented substantial growth. Our master plan projection was literally right down the middle. And they said, this is a very strong, sound number. And that's a group who are widely respected as the experts, right? In the state for enrollment projection, among other things. So I, I have a lot of sort of trepidation when I see these numbers, because clearly they're not in our, they're not at the seats and desks right now, but they're here, they're somewhere. I want to go figure out where they are. I want to figure out what that plan is and if and when they're coming back. Because I believe substantially a lot of them will.
Mr. Rowe had a comment?
Yeah, I, I'd like to jump in on this. Clearly, this discussion is what's going to drive the FY23 budget development. I just really fundamental to it.
Seamus, just give him your mic. So we, yeah.
To Dr. Hackett's point, I do think getting some kind of follow-up study to, to help and support in this would make a lot of sense. And to Mr. Hopcroft's point, I think it's, what's key to this is October one numbers, the reason we focus on this is because that's the first thing everybody reports to the state. We'll now begin to get data to look at what's happening in what we believe are comparable communities, to see whether and how this affects everybody. I mean, it's my theory, without doing any work on this, that this is an anomaly. And the reason, if you had a five-year plan and it was good for three years and suddenly it fell off a cliff, well, we know what the cliff was. And, and really the question is, when's that recovery going to happen? Is that recovery going to happen and how do we plan for it? So that's data we need to look at over the next.
Yeah. I, I would just add that, you know, state the obvious, maybe that, you know, there's the risk that people might look at these numbers and draw different conclusions. And so, you know, being able to state, as you did, Mr. Nixon, and, you know, as we've all stated, we think it's an anomaly and be able to back that up, then it, it supports the, you know, the building sizes, the, you know, all the, all the different decisions that we're making, if that's, if that's what we believe.
Well, and to Dr. Hackett's point too, though, I would like to see the cohort survival rate brought into that, though, because if we know that for the upper grades, there are kids that aren't there, but if we're still not bringing kids in, what's the reason for that, too?
Right.
Are we, do we have less kid, less families in the community? Do, have, have the families aged up and are they still in their homes? And the homes aren't turning over? Like, there, there are some other questions that we might want to be asking about the incoming elementary school students, too.
Right. Great.
I'm also in favor of the, of the idea of studying how our enrollment is changing and then seeing what the impact down the road of our, of the project fortyBs will be. And then where our students, where our students are.
Right. Okay.
I think that will just help us understand this better.
Absolutely. No, agreed. Agreed. And I think that the farther, the farther we get away from this year, the more likely it is, except, with the exception of those points where it's a natural decision point for a family to decide, okay, I've had my child in private school, but now they're going to be going in ninth grade. I want them back at Winchester High School or middle school. The numbers next year, I think, will be more telling than any, because I think students who are going to return would return next year. I don't think there are many families who are going to have their students enrolled privately and bring them back mid-year. I think they would ride next year out. And again, I think rightfully, people were hedging their bets about, are public schools really going to be open? Are they really going to be, you know? So, and they had to commit to those private school registrations back in the, back in the spring. So I do think that next year is pivotal. And I think we will be able to gauge that through some informal or data collection from discussions with families who are not here, because I think we can, as we get more into the year, I think their intentions may start to become more clear, because they know we are in school. Right? So. This was something I had asked Andrew Maron to put together. It's probably more for me than anything else, but as you can see, this is the boundary of Winchester. So what he has done is he's taking, he has taken all the residence addresses of students at each one of our elementary schools and has plotted where they are. So these could be more than one child from the same family. These are actually the houses where our kids come from. So this particular one is for Ambrose. The, just so you know, the selection of what the animal was was kind of random. But it just gives you a sense, one, of kind of how we're districted. But two, I think you also are seeing some impact of also the open enrollment potentially here. And I'm not sure, but there are some, what we could call outliers, right? That are out closer to other schools.
Specialized programming.
Yeah.
Yes. And special education program as well. Right. So you see the same thing for Lynch. But what is helpful about this is, one, it'll help us with our rooting for, our routing for transportation for next year. But it also, I think, just gives us a, a kind of a handle on the distribution of our students and kind of where's the density of where our students are coming from. So he has built that out for each one of the schools. And like I said, it may be more for me, because you, you live here, I'm new here. So it's, it's just nice, it's easier for me to see this graphically and visually to see where our students are coming from as we kind of move forward, especially with the Lynch project.
Yeah. That's interesting.
Can I make one last comment, just before we leave this tonight, which is really, really long-range? We're talking about enrollment and whether or not it's a blip and when they're coming back. COVID, I, I do think is going to have a huge impact on what our schools look like five and six years from now. So the, in December of twenty-nineteen, there were five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight births in Massachusetts. Fifty-four sixty-eight. Twenty-twenty is forty-nine forty-eight. That's a decline by almost ten percent statewide. So the question for me, and every, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks were wondering, will there be a baby boom? And it's turned out to really be more of a baby bust nationwide. But at a state level, we're not seeing the baby boom. Remember, to state level, K-12 enrollment has been flat or falling for years, while our enrollment has been rising. But if, in fact, these birth rates hold and the birth rates are sort of falling off that cliff, if you will, surely that will have some impact on Winchester. I mean, there are many other communities that appeal to young families for all the reasons we do. And so I see sort of, there's, there's two challenges to us. One is in the short term, figuring out, who are these kids and where did they go? And are they coming back in one, two, or three years? But longer term, folks around this table and others who haven't been elected yet, I need to remember that the consequence of COVID is going to mean there will be fewer young learners in Massachusetts in five or six years, unless everybody kind of moves back to Massachusetts from other parts of the country. So there will be some real long-term consequences of COVID that we're only beginning to get our heads around.
Just to clarify one point, we, we do know where most of these students are, because if they're compulsory, compulsory age of school, we have to find out where they're going before we can disenroll them. So anyone who was enrolled and disen, and went to another school or was at home, we know where they went and presumably still are. So just.
I hope that's a true statement.
So that's.
It's not always that clean. As you might know, sometimes it can happen that a student will move to a private school. The private school doesn't ask for the record sometimes. I mean, that can happen, but I, I am hopeful that that's a ninety-nine percent true statement. So I think we'll, we'll be very close to figuring that out. I also wonder what the impact of not being able to have a structured option as a full remote program this year, what kind of impact that might have had on these numbers, too. And I think that maybe the state was a little short-sighted with that, because I think we forced some families into some options that they might otherwise not have considered had we had that available to us.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? If not, then I see that we have Principal Lynn here. And if the committee is willing, I'd like to move up one of our action items, which is the eighth grade consideration of approval of the eighth grade DC field trip. And do we have consensus to do so?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Nixon?
Does Mr., did Mr. Lynn intend on participating in the lesson learned presentation or discussion?
He was not asked to do that, no.
I mean, I'm just, we're on time right now. So if you'd like to move it out of order, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yep.
And also just to note, Ms. Anderson is here, too, for the next item.
Yes. Oh, yes. I was wondering that as well.
We're on time. Mr. Lynn's early.
And we'll reward him for being honest.
That's right. That's right.
I'm glad, bye.
No pressure, James.
He appreciates that.
So let me just see. So school committee had granted a preliminary approval at the July twenty-seventh meeting to the eighth grade DC field trip, so in order for planning to begin. And at this point, registration is about to close on October fifteenth. And Principal Lynn is joining us to provide an update on the registration numbers and to seek final approval on the trip.
Yep. So right now, we have about two hundred and ninety-two students that signed up. And this is out of three hundred and seventy-two total students. So we're pretty much on the same track as we have before, slightly lower. But again, we still have a week to go. And typically, we have quite a lot of people that signed up during the last week. And so we do have high-level interests. And so our planning really hasn't changed since I last presented here. And really, the only last things that we're going to be working out and just likely will start after the new year, which is about the testing process prior to us departing for the trip, about how we're going to, you know, test for COVID. Is this something that we'll work with the Winchester Department to hold a clinic, which I'd like to do, so that parents don't have to run around a couple of days before the trip starts to have to get their student tested? And so a lot of these things are still very much in the air. And again, we're just really waiting to see how the COVID situation play out and what is the guidance given to us from the Health Department. But right now, everything is status quo, just as I presented up in July. That again, the idea is that kids are still wearing masks when they're indoors, they're on the buses. And we're still going to be asking for all participants to, to be tested for COVID, both students and also particip, and chaperones as well. But otherwise, the planning process is just like what we have done years before.
Can I ask a quick question, Ms. Lynn?
Yeah, please.
It strikes me that a lot of cities are starting to require. It strikes me that a lot of cities are starting to require vaccination records for, to get into museums, restaurants, things like that. Are, do you know if the company that you're working with will be able to manage that for the number of students that you're bringing? Will they keep some kind of general record in case businesses in DC require that?
Well, we have records of students who are vaccinated, and we're collecting that information just because a lot of our health and safety steps that we need to take are depending on vaccination records. For example, if there is an outbreak, who are the students that we need to quarantine? So we have that information. And so, you know, we will have that information before we go. So, you know, that information obviously will change because we're hoping more and more students will become vaccinated in the coming months. So to answer your question, we will have that information before we go.
Right. I guess I'm worried about providing proof of it on the other end. Will the district be handling? Will the school be handling that with the venues if they require proof of vaccination to attend, or will World Strides be handling that?
We will have to give it to them. And again, you know, if that happens, then we will have to think very carefully about what we are able to share with the vendors. But, you know, when that happens, I will feel much more comfortable if we are the ones that is handling that directly with the vendor so that we don't have the third party, you know, passing along private information.
Okay.
But so far, I would just at DC this past weekend, but so far, all the venues, I haven't seen any needing proof of vaccination to get in. For example, Smithsonian, none of the museums are asking for that.
Yeah.
You just have to have a mask.
Except for the mask, right.
The mask, yeah.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, so, thank you for coming, Mr. Lynn. I was curious, do you, can you, do you know roughly what the percentage of eighth graders are that are vaccinated or the, or trip attendees? If you don't, it's fine, but.
The last time we checked, it was around, I want to say about 75% of the students, but this is at the start of the school year. So I know that there was more students that was getting vaccinated at the start of school year to now, so I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
And I was, I was curious if that played into, you know, I was noticing the quadruple occupancy and that you don't need masks when you're in your hotel room. Any, any thoughts on, 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 you know, keeping kids who aren't vaccinated separate or, or, you know, just wondering if that's worked into your, it seems that's one of the, you've done a really good job of planning this out so there's very little vulnerability, and it, it strikes me that was one area that, you know, you could have more spread if you had a bunch of unvaccinated kids from different families together.
Right. And I think this is why making sure that all participants have a negative COVID test before we leave becomes very important. This is not, I'm not very sure that there will be a way for us to room the kids in a manner that there's a room where unvaccinated kids are there, and also there's other rooms where only vaccinated kids are there. I don't think we can, logistically, we can make that happen because right now, matching up kids with the students that they feel comfortable rooming with is a task on itself. And also, we can, you know, reveal information of vaccination status from parents to parents, from kids to kids. So I'm not very sure we can set up rooms where it's only vaccinated kids or rooms that's only unvaccinated kids. And like I said, I think our biggest deterrent is to make sure all the kids and all the participants who's on the trip are testing negative before we go.
Yeah. No, it's definitely a complicated formula, and I, I respect the, the privacy issues there. Yeah, I, I guess the, the one other thing I'd suggest is, to the extent we can encourage people to get vaccinated, anyone listening now who's planning to go on the trip, I, I encourage that 75% are already. Maybe the people that self-select into the trip are a higher percentage of that, and there's a lot of time still between now and then, but, you know, I'd be curious, you know, if I was, and I get that you can't disclose it, but I'd be curious if I was a parent, like, you know, is my unvaccinated kid with a bunch of vaccinated kids, maybe I feel a little bit better than a bunch of others, but, but thank you.
I have a question or two.
Mr. Nixon?
If you have a comment. So I want to follow up on Mr. Hopcroft's question, and I'm going to push back a little bit, Mr. Lynn. It may be hard, but I actually do think you could do exactly what Mr. Hopcroft is suggesting. I don't know that it's necessarily the right thing to do because I do respect their privacy issues, but just because it's hard doesn't mean we could do it. And as he was talking, I was actually thinking, you know, last year, as the school committee, we talked at times about what could we do to incentivize students to get vaccinated? You know, maybe one way to do it is to say, if you really want to have flexibility to choose who you room with, you got to get vaccinated. I mean, there's no, there's no requirement, there's, there's no, there's no requirement that someone goes on that DC trip and has that flexibility, right? Districts make all sorts of assignments all the time. That may be something to seriously consider. But I do also wonder about families who have, maybe not for the student who's going on the trip, but someone in the household who's immunocompromised, a sibling or a parent. And if I'm a parent of an eighth grader who wants to go to DC, what comfort level should I have about the rooming situation with my child so even though they test negative before they go, what's going to happen when they come back? Maybe you're already getting some of those questions from parents to you directly. I, you know, we don't know that, but I think those are really fair questions, and if they haven't come, they probably will come. And I do think it's something we need to think about very seriously. Not that it should jeopardize the trip, but it's a very important issue that Mr. Hopcroft brings up and one I hope we can really put some careful thought to because I think those kinds of questions are really legitimate and they deserve an answer other than it's hard or complicated. Because I know that it is, but that's not a reason, you know, not to do it. Then I actually want to throw out a, a comment I have under Proposed Health and Safety Information. It's bullet five and six, which says, "In the event that a student needs to quarantine while on the trip, World Strides will pay for a hotel room for the student to serve as quarantine space, pay for transportation, et cetera." And the same that follows is for a chaperone. So I want to be clear to you, James, and to the rest of the committee, I don't really care much about who actually pays for the room, but because of such a large trip, I care more that, like, the space is there, like, that it's been reserved. I'm actually more inclined to say, as a condition of us approving this trip, there should be whatever number of rooms you need for your chaperones and for your students, you should add X. And I don't, I think that number might even be four rooms. And I'm saying that as a father of the last one, I was, I'm the father of a student who went on the last DC trip before COVID. This happens every year, as Mr. Lynn knows, you know, norovirus spreads like wildfire. Before we talked about COVID, it was norovirus that parents always talked about at DC, and it's just, it happened. Some years are worse than others. But we did have a situation where a kid threw up at 1:00 in the morning, the sheets were stripped, the kid went back to bed and threw up again at 3:00, and then the sheets were stripped, and the kid went back to bed on the mattress with other students in the room. And no surprise, every one of those kids got sick. So I wasn't happy when I learned that that's how it happened, but I can appreciate that that's how it happened. And there just, there weren't other rooms available, really is my point. I think the chaperones were really doing the best they could with a very difficult situation. And so I would suggest it's good practice, even in non-COVID times, to have extra rooms for that very reason. But given that in the context of COVID, I'd like to see us approve the trip, not so much bickering about who pays for the extra room, although I would suggest it should be, it should be built into the price and it's shared by everybody. It's the overhead, cost of the trip. Build in some number. And if you think four is reasonable, or it should be higher or less, I, I care less about that, but just knowing when there's a situation that there is a space you can go to, in that moment, the chaperones aren't going to care who's going to pay for the room. They just need a room. That's my only comment. I don't know if you have a thought on that or not.
Yes, I think if it's the same hotel that we're going into, there should be plenty of rooms that's available. But I think this is a place that is hard to predict right now. How many kids are we talking about? Every single kid? You know, that's going to happen. And I think this is why we consistently work with World Strides because they have a base, they have, that's where they're based. And so if there's anything happens, the staff is there to help us figure out what to do next. So let's say that we put aside four rooms for quarantine purposes, and for whatever reason, we ended up with, let's say, 15 students that needs to be quarantined. I think in that situation, we're accessing the support that we have there, meaning the World Staff, to figure out, what do we do next? So let's say that we budgeted for four additional rooms, but there are 10 rooms, but in that situation, we can't find 10 rooms in the hotel room. So we will be relying on the World Stride staff to figure out, okay, so how do we now quarantine these 10 kids? Do we now put them on a van, okay, and move them to another hotel room with our staff going over, or what do we do? And these are things that are just really hard to predict at this point, what's going to happen. And this is why, again, we have to rely on World Strides to help us manage those situations, these unforeseen situations.
So given that that hasn't happened in the past when kids have gotten sick on the trip, what confidence do you have that it would be different for this trip in terms of literally coming up with space for kids who are sick?
I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to, to accommodate kids. I mean, in the past, there are kids that's getting sick, but I think the difference over here now is the quarantine piece, right? Because in the past, when the kid throws up, we're not quarantining this particular child. Now, what we're talking about is that if a child tests positive for COVID, right, we have to quarantine the kids. But based on what I know, at least in my last trip that I was in, there were plenty of empty rooms in that particular hotel that we're staying in. So that's something that I can ask World Strides, is it possible to set aside additional four or five rooms in case that there is a large amount of kids that require quarantine, right? And, you know, and see, see what they respond. But again, even if we can, the way I envision things is this, if we have that many people, we're on the phone saying, "Parents, you have to get down." And I'm trusting that most parents, if they get a phone call from us, that says your child tests positive, right, they'll be driving all night to get down there and get the kids home. At least if I'm a parent, that's what I would do, right? I would drive down and bring my kid back. So, you know, the need for quarantine room, I don't think it will be for the entire trip, right? I'm thinking it's probably a night or so. So there should be enough spaces in that hotel room to, you know, put up a child for one night or even two nights until the student, our parents come down there.
Well, so, and just, just so my point isn't misunderstood, it, while I'm, I certainly am concerned about COVID-19, I, I guess I'm trying to make a broader point, which is pretty consistently over the years, we do have a group of kids who get sick. I mean, they're clustered together, they're on a bus ride, it's a long bus ride, it's many hours. In one year, it was so bad, there were Winchester parents who had to fly down to the National Airport to pick up sick kids and fly them home. And it was a huge number of kids. So I, I would say, I almost don't care if it's COVID or something else, but if kids are actually ill, visibly ill, if they're throwing up and they're in a room with their peers, I want to get them the heck out of the room.
Right.
And, and I'm trying to find a way to be sure that space is available and not have, have a document with World Strides that says, well, we, we would pay for that room if they tested positive for COVID. I'm more interested in, are they sick? And if they're sick, let's get a space for them.
Right. Yeah. I think in the past, we always had suites that designed for the nurses and also for the trip coordinators. So, for example, the last time I was there, there were two kids that got sick. One of them ended up needing to go to the ER, and that's where we situated the student, right, to be with the adult who has that, I guess, some boundaries there because it's a suite, that there is an adjacent room, the kid is on one side of the suite and the adult's on the other side of the suite to take care of the kid. Because if the kid is vomiting all night, you're right, we don't want the kid to be in the room with three other kids. They're with the nurses, they're with the coordinators. So we do set aside two suites that's exactly for that purposes.
Because obviously, the point is, it's a learning opportunity, you want the trip to be fun, and you'd hate to see kids get sick on the trip, you know, whether it's COVID or anything else.
So just a point of clarification, just because we've been dealing with this through the negotiation, we're talking about the diff, the difference between isolation, right, is if you are COVID positive.
Right.
That, that is different than quarantining. And I questioned, I thought someone was going to ask, and I'll ask it, and maybe someone is going to, don't mean to, but the question I'm curious about, and this is a question for our Department of Health, I think, is, does the test and stay protocol potentially also apply? Because this is a school-based trip, and if you are a close contact by definition, and you certainly would be if it's a roommate who's tested positive for COVID, does the test and stay apply? And I don't even know, I don't, I don't want the answer, I don't know if this is the answer, but I, I think it's something we need to kind of really explore because it could potentially help solve some of this issue. And certainly, we're doing it in school, knock on wood, with what I think is some decent level of success, which would then kind of just change the dynamic for, instead of trying to quarantine 15 kids, which I think would be much more difficult and much more likely if they're all on the bus and some student, and you're doing the whole radius of, you know, right? So you could get very quickly to a bunch of kids.
Right.
Who would be defined as a close contact. If test and stay is not available, you could hit the Jersey Pike and then turn around and come back because you've already maxed out. So I, I think, you know, something we need to continue to have a conversation with, with Department of Health with, and I don't know whether or not the, the company has some guidelines or protocols around it either, but it would be good if we could, in fact, implement test and stay.
Right.
But maybe the residential overnight component of it puts it in a different kind of category.
Right. I'll be happy, and that's a, that's a very good point, so I'll be happy to talk with the Winchester Health Department on that. And I would think that would be a reasonable ask, especially if we get to a point where majority of the kids that's on the trip that is already vaccinated, right? And we have the ability to implement an antigen test in that moment. So, you know, we get to Philadelphia, one kid starts to have a fever, tests positive, we test all the kids that's on the bus, and we know that, oh, you're all negative, and you're asymptomatic, we can continue with the trip while isolating that particular child that tested positive.
Right. And the other question I hate to ask, want to ask it anyway because someone's going to be thinking about it out there and here, potentially, are we expecting kids to wear masks at night while they're sleeping in the room?
Right. No, I don't think that would be a reasonable ask because there's just no way.
Right.
Right.
And I, I'm asking it because I think we should just put it out there for the viewing public, just in case that is a question.
So, I was going to ask a similar question to what you asked about test and stay, Dr. Hackett, but I was going to ask if Mr. Nixon had suggested building the cost of the room into this trip. Given the parameters around the test and stay program, since it is a state-run program, do we build in the cost of test and stay to this trip for families if we need to use it and even purchase the kits ourselves or in collaboration with World Strides? And to that point, I was also going to ask what, I see the Proposed Health and Safety Information here. I'm curious to know when we're going to have a health and safety plan that is from our Public Health Department and World Strides that sort of spells this out for us so we're not sort of guessing around the table? Like, these are all great questions tonight, but I'd like to see some kind of a structured health and safety plan that talks about things like masking, when masking is, if kids are going to be in rooms with students who aren't vaccinated, will test and stay be available? Because there may be parents waiting for that before they make, like, they may have put their money up now, but they may be waiting to see that before they make a final decision about whether their students are going to go on the trip. So is there a, is there a deadline for that with World Strides that, and public health when you expect to have that available?
From the World Strides perspective, what I proposed in July, that is what we have worked together to agree that this is what, in their experience of running this trip last spring, this is what they have asked the other school. And now we have to look at Winchester. Do we want something that is more structured? Do we want something that is more, that's tighter or more restrictive? Because we might find what World Stride have proposed to us to be not sufficient enough. So that's something I can work with the Winchester Health Department and just print it out, and they say, this is based on what we know right now, this is what we will be doing, including things like, you know, they have to wear masks, they don't have to wear a mask, or what happens if a child tests, you know, go into more details about test and stay.
I appreciate you taking this on because it has become more of a Herculean effort to travel, even for just us average citizens, but to take over 300 kids on a trip. So I commend you and your staff for taking this on because it's not, and, and getting the answers to our questions to make sure we can keep everybody safe and have a good time, too. I really appreciate that. So, thank you for, for doing that and for following up with them.
I'm questioning your judgment. Why would you take this on? But that's, you know.
I'm thinking about the same thing now that I'm hearing all these questions.
Drawing his request.
Yeah, right.
I don't want the point to get lost that we already have over 280 families who.
Right. Absolutely.
Who's that all the time? To go on this trip and feel comfortable.
Right.
That they want to go on this trip now when, again, no one can predict, but presumably things will continue to improve towards the spring, hopefully. Presumably, things will continue to improve towards the spring, hopefully. I think that's what everyone's hoping and thinking. So I, I just don't want that to get lost, that yes, we have some details that we want to work out. But overall, this is a trip that our parents and our students want to do and are comfortable doing and have signed up for. So I just want us to keep that in mind.
And willing to assume that risk because they know what it is, right?
Exactly.
So maybe we could get the duct, the duct torboes down, so it's just open air the whole way, too, instead of the coach, but.
Right. And I've been on trips where, you know, every other kid was throwing up. And so, believe me, I'm very much invested in making sure that everybody on this trip, including the adults and the kids, you know, as safe and healthy as possible. So yes, we will make every effort. And so, yes, I will work with the Winchester Health Department to create something more structured. And I'll ask that question about test and stay, which I'm assuming, you know, it will apply.
And we, we could continue the conversation to your question about whether or not, if, if additional rooms are required or necessary, or we think it's a good idea, which I'm hearing people do, you know, how we might, what would be the impact of building that into?
The cost.
And/or whether or not we can provide some funding elsewhere to make that happen? And part of what's going through my head a little bit, may or may not be an appropriate use of, like, but we could get the question and the answers, whether ESTER could play into
Right.
purchasing the test, and obviously, you know, it is a school event. So I don't know why that would not be, those funds would not be eligible for that kind of thing.
Right.
Right.
Well, I mean, in terms of isolation, because of COVID, World Strides has made it very clear to us that is an expense they will assume.
Yep.
Right? Whether it's in the same hotel or not, that's certainly something I cannot imagine. But also, at the same time, I cannot imagine it will not be available.
Right.
But they have made it very clear that, you know, they didn't put a restriction on that. They said, oh, we will only isolate or provide four rooms and not five. But what they have made very clear to us is that we will provide an additional room for every single kid that tests positive. That requires isolation.
Right.
Mr. Lynn, you said they went last spring, they took DC trips last spring. And do you know how many, just out of curiosity, do you know how many trips they've taken and done this and what the outcomes have been?
Um, they have told me it's been successful. They have told me three circum, uh, three different trips, but they're all much smaller scale than us. We're talking about 50 kids and 60 kids. So it's much more small, but they have told, uh, told me about three trips that they've taken, right? Is there more? I don't know.
Have they had students test positive on those trips? No.
And it was similar with the bus, with similar going by bus?
Correct, yeah, it's all going by bus, is what they told me. And the protocol they, and they have put in place is exactly what they proposed to me, which is all staff and all students are masked during the buses indoors and testing before they go.
Mr. Nixon?
I just wanted to clarify, I'm not suggesting we would only need four rooms. I would hope we would need none. And given some years, we could probably use 15, just given how sometimes a lot of kids get sick. I just, I'm trying to make the point, what World Strides is agreeing to is to reimburse the cost of those rooms if it's a positive COVID case. But it doesn't guarantee that the rooms are actually available. I take your point 100% based on your experience, that these hotels generally have rooms available. But to my mind, is generally good enough. And knowing that on each of these trips, there are some number of kids who get sick, isn't it? I think where I'm trying to come from is, I think this would have been good practice for us to be doing anyway, pre-COVID,
Right.
to just have a little bank of rooms. If it's four, fine, if it's three, I don't really care, just have to know you have that space that's lined up on each floor for all those chaperones, and if they need to move a kid at 2:00 in the morning, it's a slam dunk, and they don't have to pick up a phone and call somebody at World Strides or go downstairs and figure out if a room's available and how many floor, I mean, if a kid is sick, get them into a safe place. That's kind of where I'm coming from. But I, by the way, and I agree with Mr. Brady, I, I'm, I'm heartened to see the strong interest in the trip. Like, I want to support it. I, I just feel like there's something we could do here to just back us up a little bit with a safety net in terms of rooms that is just kind of common sense.
Mr. Hopcraft?
So, so I also wanted to back up Mr. Brady. I, I think it's less a question in my mind about if and more about how.
How.
And, and, you know, I, I really like Mr. Nixon's suggestion. And when I think about, first of all, if you have 300 kids going down there with quad occupancy, you're talking about 75 rooms. So you'd have to believe that a hotel might be willing to kick in four free rooms. However, maybe World Strides negotiate that, and so maybe that's already baked into the price. But even still, a hotel room in DC is probably $300, maybe a little bit more. So it averages out to a dollar a kid per night. So the cost of building in, you know, an extra, you know,
Couple of rooms.
small bank of rooms might be, you know, $10 or something, you know, like, it's, it, it seems like a very prudent thing. Not, not just for the, the COVID, which I, I would lean on World Strides to get the additional rooms if you had to actually quarantine people. But, you know, in the scenario that Mr. Nixon is talking about of, of just a kid throwing up in a room, you know, it'd be nice to separate them, there's lots of things going around, especially nowadays when you don't know, you know, what the significance of a kid throwing up in a room is. You know, it'd be nice to, to not have that spread throughout the trip.
Significant at any point in time to me, but the scenario you described is, yeah.
Yeah, and then
Not a pretty one.
No.
The only other thing I'd say, which, and I don't know there's a solution for it, is that, you know, as a parent, I would be happier if my kid was in a room with vaccinated kids. You know, I'd hope that everyone, by the time they go on the trip, is vaccinated. And I just put it out there, again, I don't know there's anything you can do with that. And I'm not sure that lumping all the unvaccinated kids together is a wise public health thing to do. So, you know.
What we could have done, which is, we, we didn't kind of discussed a little bit informally, not just with the trip, but the whole idea of extracurricular activities requiring vaccinations, right?
Or at least overnight ones.
Yeah, I mean, we could have made that decision. I, I think we, I think for good reasons, didn't make that decision because I think it, it could be somewhat exclusionary. But I would imagine that the percentage will be high. And so, I mean, I, hopefully, we, we will know that number and be able to, you know, signal maybe a little bit that we're, you know, confident. But again, it is a little bit of a risk tolerance question for, for parents and families, too, so.
It's hard to say, I have a feeling that the students that are not vaccinated by the time we get close to going on a trip is probably not going to have their kids vaccinated regardless, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are you looking for a motion that includes some reference to working with the Board of Public Health? Or there, we don't need to do that, right? It's just understood through our conversation?
Correct.
That's correct.
That'd be my recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd be happy to make a motion that we provide final approval for a grade eight trip to Washington DC for March 21st through 25th, 2022, as presented, though, with four additional hotel rooms to be reserved as swing space for six students or chaperones.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. But it's unanimous for, oh, with Mr. Brady stepping out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Enjoy the conversation about kids throwing up.
Sorry for the
It's not how this was going till you showed up.
Sorry for the
On your drive home.
Thank you.
Should we take Miss Anderson?
Thanks, James.
Should we take Miss Anderson?
So, um.
Same questions all over again?
Yes, that's correct. So seeing as we have Miss Anderson here, she is seeking consideration of approval of the French trip. And so if the committee has consensus, we will take Miss Anderson out of order of agenda as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Bonjour.
Bonsoir. I'm Joyce Anderson, I've been a teacher in Winchester since 1988, and I've taken over 12 trips with students. I thought I might start with just a brief history of the exchange. When I did my first trip in 1990, the mayor of Saint-Germain was considering Winchester as a sister city of his own. And we had a dinner part, we were invited to a dinner party and we helped to talk that into happening. So since that time, we've been sister cities with Saint-Germain lay near Paris, and we've exchanged with that city many, many times. And although last year's trip, we did travel in February, but of course, we could not host because of the mid-March incidents. But we did find a way to set up a new exchange in Saint-Germain starting this school year. So I've been in contact with their administrator, their teachers, my students, the tour company, Jump Street Tours, and we've set up a plan that looks a little bit like normal used to look. And I think it's completely doable and reasonable, reasonably priced. And so I'm offering it to my students with your permission. Be a traditional trip, that is to say. We would stay about 12 days. We would have one student per family, living family life and meeting as a group at school the next day with me, doing tourism or shadowing students. And then we would host in June in the same manner, having one student from France live with Winchester family here, alternating activities of school, like, school visit and tourism. And they're proposing June as a date.
Any questions from the committee?
Quick one.
Similar questions.
Jump Street is very familiar to me, have we used them before?
Yes.
For France, and I apologize if you already said that, but you have history with them, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr., Mr. Hopcraft?
Hi. I think this is great, I, I spent time overseas when I was in college, and I think it's a very worthwhile thing to do. Curious, given the pandemic, you know, what your thoughts are around, you know, COVID mitigation and en route and throughout the program?
Well, I'm sure that we would follow whatever rules are necessary. Just to travel internationally, they have to have proof of vaccination, COVID negative, I think they have to have both.
They do.
Yes, so I also think that when I reach out to try and match student to family, I think I can ask, you know, if they would accept a student who's unvaccinated, are you vaccinated? I think I, since they're living in families, I don't understand why that wouldn't be okay. I'm sure they would expect the same. They've actually asked in the past if they could have vaccination. This is six years ago, they wanted vaccination records, which we didn't give them, but we assured them that, you know, for the, what they were looking for, this was a requirement for school attendance in our state. And I predict that would happen again this time.
So all students are vaccinated then for the travel, it sounds like?
They won't be able to get into France without a vaccination. So that, that's, that's, that's a problem that we don't even have to worry about.
They usually require, there's a QR code to enter any building, I believe.
Yeah.
You have to be beeped in, that's what I'm told.
I was there in June, I'm sure it's changed since then. But even then, it would, they were very stringent on the vaccine, being vaccinated as well as regular. I think every 72 hours, we had to, we had to produce a PCR negative test.
That's great. And is the whole class going, or?
My French counterpart would like to lead, bring 30 students, and I have, I have, I am thinking my limit would be 25. But I had a lot of interest in a hands-up count. I don't know that exact number yet.
Other questions?
I guess I have one more. Is, is, can you talk about why, it sort of seems obvious, but talk a little more about why it's limited to French students in four and then five and slash AP? And I'm asking because I think in some years for the trip to Spain, that has been opened up to kids who take Spanish III, which is obviously, it's a bigger group of kids, right? So that can become a little harder to manage. But you might have some juniors or seniors in French III who would be really engaged in the trip?
Yes, thank you for the question. We actually talked about this this week.
Oh, good.
Because the policy is only juniors and seniors can go on the trip, and we take it every two years. So that gives everyone a chance to go on a trip. And so we asked, are there any juniors in French III? No, there are not. So I'll say.
That makes it easy.
That makes it easy. But we would offer that to that student.
Okay.
If that person existed.
Thank you.
That's our policy.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what some of the, of the learning activities and reflections were, just out of curiosity.
While we're on the trip?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the students will miss two or three days of school, so they're doing work for their, for their other teachers at home. I have an assignment for them, which is usually journal, journal keeping. They observe classrooms, they teach English, that type of thing. Part of their school visit experience.
Thank you. Any other questions, otherwise I would accept a motion. Bug.
No, these little flags.
Getting through the screens.
Move to approve the trip as outlined.
I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote is unanimous.
Merci beaucoup.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, looking forward to good things. And with that, we will move back onto schedule or back onto our agenda, which is a presentation on lessons learned from a staff perspective by Dr. Ellen Emma. You may recall that in our last meeting and also today, our student representatives had summarized some of the information on lessons learned from a student perspective from school council, and then also today from the wider student body. And Dr. Ellen Emma has worked with some of the staff to capture some of their ideas around what worked well during the pandemic and continues to prove useful during this year as we are still grappling with challenges from the pandemic.
Great points, thank you. And also, I just want to add, just kind of as a big picture overview before we get into some of it, certainly, the teachers gauge what worked by asking the students directly, getting their feedback and involving them. You may remember, I can't, maybe five years ago now, six years ago, in the evaluation process, part of it became that teachers had to ask students for feedback. And for many staff now, that's not just a once-a-year thing, or it's a regularly embedded kind of ongoing. So the way that they really gauge what's working is, A, what they see in terms of student growth and achievement, but also in the feedback that they get from students. And then the other kind of big picture thing I wanted to say, which you just hit on, beautiful Miss Spoloneis, is exactly to the question Mr. Nixon was asking before, we could share a million things about awesome things that people did in the past year and a half, but what we're really focused on at this point was, what were the things that were so powerful? That it's not just a what to do during the pandemic, it's what continues to impact and shape what we do now and what we should do going forward. And I know that you met with Frank in thinking about your goal setting, and all of this will tie in with that. So certainly, this is not just a tonight this piece, this is an ongoing conversation. As always, in education, we like to think about, it's not just the student growth, it's our growth, right? Every day, I'm thinking about that as well. So we tried to put these kind of in some buckets to think about this way. So one of the things that's really changed is often the way that we think about things, like mindsets around pieces. So one big thing is kind of that flexible mindset in schools. I always love when they show the pictures of like a classroom 100 years ago and some classrooms still today. Sometimes they can look pretty similar, other than the desks aren't actually bolted. So, you know, we've moved, obviously, in some of those pieces, but there's still lots of room to grow. And in education, being more agile and responsive. And I think we took from this an opportunity to get outside of our comfort zone around some of those pieces. Certainly, as I think we all did in our lives during the pandemic, really thinking about what's most important to us, kind of slowing down and thinking about how to be proactive and responsive versus just kind of reactive. Certainly, there's lots of management pieces everybody was doing, including the classroom teachers and the students in the moment. But more kind of getting to that big picture of what's most important to us and staying focused on that. This sounds like kind of a common sense thing, but it became so obvious in the implementation during COVID because obviously, if you have students on screens a lot, you need to give a break. You can't be sitting on a screen for, as we all know, seven or eight hours. But the mindset of actually that taking short, quick breaks, especially sometimes some movement or a brain break, really does allow for better work when they return. And I think sometimes in schools, we've always been so focused on, we have so much to do, that we don't put that time in for that little break that actually allows for deeper learning when we return. We learned last year, we had to be so much more student-centered because we had to be so responsive to individual needs, to family needs, to what was happening in that moment. And so our way we had always done things, which often can be sometimes a hybrid between teacher And so our way we had always done things, which often can be sometimes a hybrid between teacher-centered and student-centered, helped us move on that continuum to more student-centered. And obviously there were so many things going on last night, last night, last year. Besides the pandemic with all of what was happening politically, around social justice, all of those pieces. There were so many rich opportunities for thinking about connecting directly to students' lives and the world around them at the moment. And teachers really saw how powerful that was in the learning of the academic standards tied to things that were happening in their lives, that when we're looking at things people are doing now, there's still a lot more of that kind of personalizing and connection because it deepens that academic learning. Certainly we had to really learn the lesson of depth over breadth. And I think, you know, we've taken that lesson well going forward. Obviously there's lots of societal pressure around learning loss and concerns around that. But what we saw truly is when we slowed down, focused on what was most important, went really deep with that, that there is some of our curriculum that we can let go of and that's okay. That's actually more meaningful to the students because they really learn the pieces that we are focused on. So although we all still struggle every day and we probably do it in our personal lives, we swore we wouldn't put this many things back on our to-do list. It's a mindful thing that we try to remind ourselves of regularly is that we really want that depth. We want that real learning. Certainly it was a whole new way to engage students. So it really gave us an opportunity and we see it as that. And people developed some awesome things. They've been able to carry forward and keep expanding on, which is so much more of a student voice and choice. Because in order to kind of capture them in remote learning, we needed to build so much more of that in. And that's a great practice. We've been able to keep going forward. And one thing I learned, I love that we've learned is so much more about student digital organization. You know, we all learn differently and there's many, many ways to organize ourselves. And when we talk about things like, Pam and I talk all the time about not getting caught in the mindset of this way is the way to get kids to be organized. Our real goal is to show them all the tools and let them help us coach them to navigate what works best for them. So this has given us an opportunity. This is the digital generation and that's what they're going to probably do in their future. So it really pushed us to get more comfortable with that and out of kind of the way we had organized before. So I sometimes think about school as kind of two big areas. There's the structure of what we do and then there's kind of the teaching and learning. So under the structures, our huge takeaways that we are continuing this year is thinking about the way that we do meetings. Certainly there's power of in-person meetings, but also for instance, our elementary grade level meetings, which are so, so important because we want to keep our five elementary schools communicating and consistent. We used to spend so much of that time once a month driving around town, getting to buildings. So we continue to do those on Zoom and that's been very powerful. So we have other opportunities for in-person, but keeping that has helped us. Certainly around professional development, when many other districts said, you know, our teachers really took this past summer off, like our teachers really didn't. And I think so much of it was the ability for them to, I can still go on vacation and I can go to this two-hour workshop by zooming into this. Or my kids are over the age that I have to be here with them and I don't want to have to get childcare, but they can entertain themselves for me to do this two-hour PD. So that has given us more flexibility as well. And then certainly around IEPs, 504s, conferences. You know, special ed has been saying how powerful it is of how many IEP meetings, like both parents were able to attend over the past year. And so going forward with that still as, unless a family has a need or request that's different, allowing for that, the same thing around 504s and conferences. Although some people really like to do an in-person, the parents, and certainly we work on those requests. There's a lot of time wasted in transitions and movements and all of that that doesn't happen when we do it electronically. So those are things we always want to keep in our toolbox. Nothing to do with the pandemic, even when we're not wearing these masks anymore. That's our goal is to continue with that. Our tools with the students. We've really found that some of our structures have actually made for more student engagement and interaction, not less. It's not all the time. So just like everything in life, we, just like we're trying to teach them, like take the tool that makes the most sense for the activity you are doing right now. Certainly through Google Classroom, although lots of our teachers use that or used it a little bit. The full use of it allows for so much more organization and ongoing two-way communication, not just one way. And then a student would need to email a teacher in order to have that communication. It allows for just ongoing dialogue. Jamboard, which I love, which is one of the, there's lots of tools. We just tried to highlight what were some of the big takeaways. Jamboard, everyone knows my fondness for stickies. Jamboard is basically like a virtual way to do stickies. So students can all put something up at the same time. So that's part of what we found was some of these tech tools being engaging, you know, in the old days, two years ago. You might have a student come up and put something under a document camera for the classroom to see. So that's just, still just one student engaged in that moment and then passive participation by the other students that we always hoped for. Now we can actually have them doing something. So teachers are still using these tools as part of the time, like in the classrooms, even when they're in person, because it allows for simultaneous interaction and engagement. Virtual manipulatives. I, as Ms. Kirby has taught me, I need to say that I am a mathematician and embrace that. But it, some of the times the, the concepts of shapes and geometry eluded me. So being able to use those virtual manipulatives, they don't have to be in person with the manipulative, manipulatives in class. They can now be doing those things at home. Google Slides, there's now like ways to do two-way interaction and that. So teachers can still share information and be the, you know, the content expert that they are, but allow for students to engage with that in different ways. I know Ms. Bergson loves this. This is a personal passion too. Outdoor classrooms, we've always known they're great, but COVID had really pushed us to actually do it as more of a real learning environment versus a let's go outside and talk about this or do this. And I, that has stopped because I still see lots of people talking about and going outside to do different things. So that's been great. And tools for virtual check-ins. I love it. So like we were just talking about today, it's great when students take initiative and they reach out to a teacher. We say advocate for yourself. But as we know, that's just not the structure of what happens often in schools and just in society in terms of interaction with, you know, when they're still students. And I think the tools that we've built in, which I'll bring something up in a second about it, those things like create a space that's already there. So it doesn't mean the student has to take the full initiative in order to make it happen. There's already something there and now they just kind of have to meet halfway, which I think has been very positive. To engage students more in just asking questions and feeling comfortable just talking about learning concepts and such. So now our other big bucket, thinking about actual teaching and learning versus kind of the structure and the tools. So blended learning, the lesson we've really learned and that we want to take forward. There are some times where virtual learning is better than in-person for certain things. So one of the things we really like is when there's a concept that we really want to give students time to think about and process before we want them to share. Doing that kind of in a virtual environment, whether that's over, you know, Google Docs or Jamboard or whatever tool we're using, that idea that they are first able to reflect so that processing speed isn't dependent on participation and that everyone is expected to participate. You have time now to bring that kind of to the party. One of the things teachers noticed is when they need to work on uncomfortable topics, which are many topics within our standards, that students are often more comfortable sharing with that virtually than they are in-person. They wouldn't necessarily raise their hand to talk about a topic that can sometimes be controversial or to ask a question that they need to ask and help and whatever it may be. But they will do it more so even with other students, but in a virtual environment. So the students have expressed that and the teachers have seen that in action. The, the awesome thing, and I love this, again, I'm a sticky fan and I love our big giant stickies. But once you giant sticky something, you need to transcribe it and then it often goes into a doc or whatever it may be. Using the virtual tools like Jamboard or the other ways that they have students share, they could actually put them right in the Google Classroom so students can keep accessing them whenever they want and it's not kind of gone when you're not right there in the classroom. One of the great things we've seen, although it was certainly a struggle, but that we want to continue to keep doing is allowing that independence with students figuring out a structure and a system that work for themselves and kind of doing their own time management rather than teachers walking them through every piece. So although it's not obviously as loose as things were, especially at the beginning of the pandemic, we don't want to go back to just the way that it was, which is teacher structuring. This is exactly when you do this and when you do this. Different things work for different learners and that learning how to navigate, even when it means you may not do as well on something, is as valuable a lesson as the academic skills is figuring out what works for you. And then some of the ways that they now capture things, and we'll see something on a little video clip after, in the next little quick presentation that teachers did, now still is really great when kids are out just on a regular basis. So teachers using more things like EdPuzzle or using more of the tools that allows them to kind of capture a video. You don't have to be in class to get the teacher voice and some of the teacher highlights, nor does a teacher need to create a whole separate thing for kids who are out. So it's something that works both for the kids who are there and the kids who are out. And it allows for kids to hear, like teachers, so important in the classroom often is modeling your own thinking or your process on how you got to something, not just the content. And those kind of video and voice recordings allows for students, not only students that are out, but students who were there to go back if they want to go back to it. So it's, it's not necessarily recording the whole class lesson that they have to go to, but it helps teachers focus for students, what's the essential pieces that is the piece that they've captured on video. One of the things that was great was that because paper and pencil testing time was limited, it kind of pushed us to create some more authentic assessments and really think about ways that students can be creating things that will mimic more at least of the real world. So we've seen that. We had more collaboration time last year, which ha- helped everyone to learn and now they're able to embed more practices now in going forward based on that. Again, because they tapped so much into students' experiences last year, what was happening in their lives, that has shaped, people built assessments that allowed students that opportunity last year, that now they'll use those assessments, but it'll be whatever's going on in the students' lives any year that they're doing it. Again, that kind of student management time. And the learning tools, again, they can post them and most people are using Google Classroom, but those tools are always there then for the students to access. We had huge growth with SEL strategies. People learned a lot more. Learned so much about anxiety, depression, trauma, how to support students around the castle standards and the social justice. And they built them into their lessons last year. So now those are used this year and ongoing. And people saw how powerful those SEL moments were, that now they continue to, there's nothing like living the experience to know that it works with the students. And then they, again, like I was saying, there's more opportunities for those informal, actual connections. So virtual office hours, learning lounges, breakout rooms. Those are all opportunities to have kind of that small group discussion that can be either one-on-one or with a small group. And that's so much more private than just standing next to a student's desk with the whole class hearing those pieces. And it allows for that immediate ability for everybody to engage simultaneously and show each other their things. So I'm not going to read through all these. You have the PowerPoint, but just some really cool ways that it pushed us and now is having us think about pieces differently. So the whole purpose of health and wellness, right, is that they learn lifelong habits, that they're able to embed and be part of their lives. But it's always been very kind of siloed in school. You learn this either in your health class or in the gym. And it helped us to focus so much more than you have to learn the proper way to dribble a basketball, although I'm a very big basketball fan. That's really not the focus of the health and PE standards. So students doing it in their own environments was so much more powerful to how to apply this to your life. So now we're trying to continue those same kinds of activities and assessments. It really allowed for more critical thinking and personalized choice materials. So now, again, we saw a whole different level of engagement and excitement with students around these. And so continuing to do those same practices that will allow them to be part of that. I love this idea that students think like as their home now, more of like their lab. So if you think about typical work at home, homework, it hasn't been always the most exciting stuff that we do. But last year really helped us see your hu- your home can be your lab. This can be a place where you can do science, you can experience nature, you can experience, you can do, build something with your engineering standards. You can, you know, persuade your family about this with your writing versus doing an assignment that's kind of disconnected. So thinking more about the home is the lab. And one of the awesome things, because our specials were virtual for so much of the time, having students create, and this was so cool, I happened to be in a class listening to the students talk about the power of this. The art students had to create an art space at home in, for their art classes. And they all looked very different and they figured them out themselves and then they have a kind of preferred art kind of design that they do. But students were saying that they never really thought about art. Bless you. Art is something that they create a space for at home. And so that's just one example of kind of the things, how we really connected more to the students' lives because we were virtually in your homes all the time. So connected more to the students' lives that now they take those lessons with them. Like some of the students were like, I'm never having a space without a lab again. Even in my dorm, I'm going to have like a little my own lab space. So that was pretty cool to hear about how they're taking that forward themselves, even without us, never mind what we learned. So sorry, that was a lot spoken quickly. So happy for any questions or thoughts.
Can I ask you to go back two or three slides? I want to put in a plug. Stop.
I don't know why you looked this way.
I had a feeling.
Just like to say for the record that this young man is Nathan Shepherd, who I'm naming because he's now an adult and he's a graduate of Winchester High School. And he got into six architecture programs and he is now a freshman at Penn State in studio there and he's doing great.
And I got his face in his dorm.
Nathan communicated to me today that, so he, his, his design, he's got a very interesting design sort of motif. Some of his work has been seen at the, at Town Hall on Town Day, you know, where we exhibit our art and architecture students' work and portraits and so forth. And I, I got a message from him today that what he appreciated about sort of flexibility during COVID, he was able to go back to some of his earlier designs and work on them. He had the extra time and the ability to do it. He, but he also expressed something that I think we, I've heard from other students too, is that when you have, when students have that flexibility, so overall very positive experience for him and I just wanted to dote on him because he's, you know, he's got a bright future here in architecture and kudos to him for, for pursuing it. But he did articulate, you know, for those students who have that kind of independent work, it's great to sort of have the time to do it and to have access to the material. But then the other challenge sometimes is then when you have questions, you want to bounce off the teacher, right? So if, if access to your, your content is one thing and you have the time, what kind of interaction do you need with your teachers? And that can be a real challenge, right? We have a lot of students doing some kind of independent work. And I think we sort of, you know, maybe continue to, to struggle with that. But I wanted to just say two things. In your presentation, Dr. Ellen Emma, you twice talked about me. One was the Jamboard discussion and the Post-its that are sort of kept into perpetuity. You can go back and add to them. One was the Jamboard discussion and the Post-its that are sort of kept into perpetuity. You can go back and add to them. Um, you talked about, you talked about other examples where students could go back to their work. And I feel like that is maybe one of the, one of the more me, a- aside from, you know, I'm interested in, you know, so what tools are we using now that we were forced to use and they're great, so we want to continue to use them, fine. But, but even kind of deeper, more ethereal sort of concepts. Um, this idea that in the digital space, if students can have the opportunity to go back to something, whether it's to make it in their minds finished or quote better, or to simply to take that, to extend the learning process, I think could be really exciting. Um, my ho- my household just saw the third, sixth grade timeline go out the door last week. And just like the two before it, they're on poster board and they're a snapshot moment in time. They're not digital, they're cute, but how cool would it be, you know, if an eighth grader or a 10th grader could have access to that? And, and, and with maybe with the same questions, not just extend the timeline, different kinds of questions, you know, reflect on their goals or what was meaningful to them as they begin to change as a young adult. I, I mean, I just think th- this element of becoming more digital could be very, very exciting, but we were already going digital. So I think this dovetails with COVID just almost requiring a level of flexibility and open-mindedness to our practice, right? That maybe marries the two. I wish I could say that in a more artful way. I hope it's clear what I'm saying. I, I think that this could be really, really an exciting way to continue to engage students.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And you said it great. I mean, that's, we were going that way, but just like everything in life, it's one thing to know something philosophically or to learn something and it's different to live it and see what that looks like and feels like. And I think, you know, our teachers and students had an opportunity for that. And you're right about their own work and how they can keep refining that. And, you know, if my peers say in class some great things, like I don't necessarily remember what those things are when I'm going to work on something, but if their stuff is also kept there and posted there, like I can pull from their ideas too and what I learned from them. And when a teacher creates a resource like an anchor chart or something that they really want for the big tenants for students to remember, like, that's there too. So if you think about all of us in our lives and we're working on something, right? We use our resources all the time, like other people, and we also pull up something from the past. Or, oh, I remember somebody sent me an email on this, or there was a presentation about, let me look at this. Um, and I think we're just teaching those same skills with that. It's not just what you remember and can give back. It's like, how do you pull all that information, synthesize it and do something with it?
I was also going to say that I really appreciate that students can keep the recordings of, of, um, sharing their voice and thinking on certain projects. And I think I've seen that over the years. Um, a project that might have been in seventh grade or eighth grade, just interviewing a grandparent or interviewing some person who meant something to you. And then a few years later in social studies, um, maybe a bigger, a larger debate project, um, for one of the later grades. Then that same recording comes back and it's useful, um, and very germane to the topic that the student might, um, pursue. And I think we also saw that with the Student Service Learning Project, um, a presentation from a few weeks ago when students were introducing their oral history, history project, um, on Winchester during COVID-19. Um, so I think it's great that we can keep these, um, recordings and then use them and refer to them again in the future.
And some of the people that they record, right? Um, that's like a resource we would never have again, right? So.
So I noticed a couple of things, Dr. Ellen Emma, that I heard you say. Collaboration, authentic as set experiences, um, uh, finding new ways to assess authentically. It strikes me that these are things that we have been working on in the district and looking to find the time for, for years and looking to find the space for. And I guess I'm interested in, um, not only the things that we were able to add on in the pandemic, like the ability to, um, work with some new digital tools and new ways to, um, demonstrate that. But it also occurs to me that there's a lot of things that we were able to do that we were able to capitalize on. That in some ways, the work that's been done in this district actually set us up well to be flexible. Can you reflect on that for a minute?
Sure. Um, I think that's definitely true around some of those concepts. Certainly kind of the mindset and the groundwork was laid and just like any organization, right? We have people on different places in the continuum. Um, but I think this moved everyone with those pieces. And there was never, you know, a time in our recent history that kind of made people take stock more. Um, to really say, let's connect to what's happening. So I think that was an opportunity in that moment. Um, to what I think we were best prepared for, I think it was technology that we were already, I mean, we certainly went further with it and learned new tools. But our turnaround was like super quick for everybody up and running. Um, so I think that foundation was probably the one that across the district affected the most, um, in that way. Um, it, this isn't a popular thing to say, but you know me, I'll say it anyway. Um, I don't think all of our standards that we focus on in schools are meaningful or what we should be focusing on. Um, in every content area, there's a lot of learning that really doesn't need to happen, in my opinion. Um, where, you know, the little deep, memorizing the little details about a million things isn't as helpful. If you go into a major about that, you will focus on that. If that becomes your career, you will. Um, but, so the concept of learning loss, um, eludes me a little. Um, just being honest, because there's certainly some things that we couldn't do because there wasn't enough time that are important. But I, I really believe that what we gained with all of those pieces are just as, like when we think about real life and human beings and what we need to know and learn, like I don't really think we're at a learning loss. Certainly we did less standards, but in education, I think we could revisit those standards and what our actual goals are for students and what they do with their learning. That's certainly not a Winchester thing. That's much larger, so.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting we're in any different place than anyone else around that.
Right. I'm wondering how we make space for both going forward. How do we not lose those things that actually drove us deeper with kids and built skills that are extremely important for learners in life? And still marry that with the same amount of standards that we've always.
Well, you can't. That's my opinion. Um, and that's what I think most districts make the mistake of is thinking you could have it all. Um, and I think what Frank and I were talking about, the concept of, uh, what gets, what gets asset, what gets measured gets done. And I was thinking about that also as what gets fed grows. So to your question of how can we do that is continuing to keep everyone focused on what are the essential things? And defining as you guys are doing the goal work and talking about those pieces, what are the essential things? So that that is, just like we say, the budget should be a reflection of our goals, right? Like our, the goals should be a reflection then of what we do in the classroom. And to recognize and accept and say out loud, we can't do it all because it's, we're on the same calendar we were on a hundred years ago. So if we want to be able to do these pieces, it means we have to be okay with letting go. Now, I'm not suggesting that's easy, um, but that's the truth. Like we can't, we cannot do all those good practices and return to full court press on all the academic standards. And I think our student data is pretty loud and clear around the pressure that, that full court press around academic standards creates.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Thanks. Um, so I'm, I'm really glad to hear that the, uh, work that we've been doing in the district over the years has, has put us in a position that we could, um, uh, respond to, to a, such a techno- technology adoption event as the pandemic. Um, you know, in particular, I, I loved hearing that, you know, um, with simultaneous engagements in the classroom of students using, you know, the Jamboard, um, you know, the, the fact that the elementary school teachers are, you know, in both, both those cases, they're saving time, they're doing more meaningful time together and less waiting, whether it's driving or waiting for their turn to go up to the front of the room. Um, I love the fact that both parents are attending the, the IEPs and 504s and student conferences. I think there's a lot of need for students to, um, uh, develop their digital organization and understand what's responsible and what isn't responsible. So I, 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 I'm a big fan and I love that all of the sort of digital side of this stuff is happening. Um, I was also really intrigued by the outdoor classrooms. Um, and in particular, I kind of look over at Mr. Nixon and think about all these buildings we're building and, and, and how, um, you know, how we think about space. Um, indoor space and, you know, atrium space and outdoor space and, and things, you know, not just for a pandemic. But, um, if we learn that that's a really beneficial thing, you know, we have, you know, streams that run by our schools and other things that could be part of the learning environment that, um, you know, hopefully we can explore when we get to, to doing the, the, the building projects. But I appreciate you pulling this, this all together. This is, this is really wonderful.
Thank you. This is really the work of the whole district is just what that is, so.
I appreciate you reflecting a wonderful district.
Thank you.
Well said. Um, any other comments?
I have a couple of more, but I don't want to take Mr. Brady's airtime.
No, I don't think we all need to comment on everything. Go, go ahead.
Jen, can you talk about, you talked about changing mindsets. What about your perception around changing mindsets of parents at the elementary level? I mean, as you were speaking, I was reflecting on a period not that long ago where there were some strong opinions about BYOD, Chromebooks, fifth grade. Um, no doubt, you know, that technology was sort of a lifeline for a lot of those kids, right, last year? Do you, I mean, in your position, you, 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 like I think a lot of us, you tend to hear from parents when they're not happy. But do you have any impression about changing mindsets among parents?
So that's interesting. I think that's like a room to grow as a district, like as always, right? Like everybody else, you know, you focus on like what's urgent on your to-do list. And I don't think we necessarily do as good of a job with kind of working with parents and talking through these pieces and hearing their input. Certainly, um, you know, classroom teachers take that and then share that back when we're working on things. So they get some of that direct feedback. Um, but I think that's an area where we could, it's, I should say it's also hard to tell because we often hear from a very small group, right? And that's not necessarily representative of the larger group. And sometime in schools, and I myself always mark this as a needs improvement area on my own kind of assessment, um, is that we, um, I don't want to say that I, uh, I don't think I'm more responsive to those groups, but I don't do as good enough of a job of getting feedback from all of the other groups in meaningful ways, like we do surveys and those are helpful. But then kind of that digging down to the next layer. Um, I have lots of anecdotal data, but I wouldn't say that's necessarily valid or reliable. Um, you know, it, on the whole, we, we don't hear from most parents, or I would say I don't hear. Usually I hear when people are very unhappy or they're super happy and want to give a kudos to someone about something. Um, so I tend to hear kind of from the two extremes. Um, certainly around technology, to your point. Um, and you all did so much to support this, so we're so appreciative because that's how we got to where we were able to move to that technology on a dime. Um, but I didn't hear a peep from one single parent complaining about B Y, my first year here, that there wasn't any complaints about us being BYOD, um, or student on devices. Certainly I think that was a changing thing for parents to see the value of that as a tool. Um, and it was a hard year to gauge even that, right? Because we don't want them on it all the time. So it's that whole thing of still learning that it's a tool, that you pick that tool up when it's useful to that. So I'm not sure if I answered.
That was great. That's great. I appreciate that. Um, and then my, my last question, um, it's to you as much as it is to Dr. Hackett. But when you, you, and I appreciate when you speak frankly about what may be more or less meaningful, you know, in the classroom from a curriculum point of view. But, you know, we have a lot of DESI standards we have to maintain and you too. So I can't help but wonder, so I, I presume other districts like ours either are now or will at some point go through a lessons learned exercise. I think DESI should do the same thing. I don't know if they're going to, but I think they should.
I like you being grounded in that reality.
I saw a gesture from the corner of the room. I didn't see that. If, I, I, I seriously wonder if there isn't, um, value in, you know, whether it's an MASC initiative with other districts or Dr. Hackett is MASS. Is this a conversation that can be had at some point? You know, are, are there sort of shared experiences, some common denominators, that districts really feel they can go back to DESI or to the Board of Education and say, you know, here's what we learned, here's what we can continue to do, we need some relaxation. We need some flexibility, uh, some change on your part to, to continue to do this. Because to, to Dr. Ellen Emma's point, there's only, only so many instructional hours in the day and in the year. Um, we can have, we can have a lot of aspiration that comes out of this, but it's an opportunity for change on a state level too, I have to assume. And I wonder if that's a conversation that, uh, can be had.
Yes, it can be had. Um, and I think we probably have a lot of ideas around what, um, would be some lessons learned by the department. Uh, you know, it was funny when, as you were talking about that, and I was thinking about the beginning of the pandemic. I was much more hopeful at the beginning of the pandemic when it was truly, I think, everyone trying to figure it out together, including the department.
Right.
Looking and leaning on us as much as we were looking and leaning on them. I thought this could change a lot of things.
Fundamentally.
Fundamentally change a lot of things, including, because what gets measured gets done, but also what you do needs to have the right measurement.
Right.
And I think that's part of what we're talking about. I mean reportedly, purportedly, the new assessment, the new MCAS assessment, the new generation is, is really trying to measure critical thinking, you know, synthesis skills, the same kind of skills that we're talking about here that should be applicable across any content, right? So you should not have, we shouldn't have our students going in and taking the MCAS and necessarily being a victim of not covering a particular standard in a particular way anymore. Those days should be over. And if that is true, then everything we heard here tonight in a normal year should be reflected in MCAS. And I think there's a, I think there is a certain amount of truth to that from Winchester. I think it's not coincidental that we score well on MCAS because I do think that we're able to not worry about it as much as every other school systems I've ever been in. That was such a major driver of every conversation we had is how do we improve our MCAS scores? But you get to a certain point in that standard deviation tail that it, you kind of get relief from that and you're able to think differently about everything, which is just so freeing. But as we came into this year, and I think we saw it in May, and I think it's, you know, I understand it's political as much as anything. Um, it just started to be feeling much more again like a hammer. And I don't know that the department's really interested in having that conversation. That doesn't mean that we can't have it either here regionally. It doesn't mean we can't continue to try to push those ideas up. Um, but I don't think that they, again, my perception, I don't feel like they're in a place right now where they're able to have that discussion for a lot of reasons, which I understand are legitimate is. But I do think that, and I know Jen's group meets regionally and, I mean, there are different, um, you know, principals meetings, special ed director meetings, superintendent's meetings. I think us pushing that conversation from here with those groups makes a lot of sense. I would be curious to hear, um, how other people are thinking about this stuff.
Um, with that, I believe Dr. Ellen Emma has another portion of her presentation.
So this is really, um, so just kind of, um, we gathered pretty quickly over the last few days, just some voice from people around and thinking about just having the holiday yesterday. What does that look like? What do we do? How do we address this? So, um, certainly this could be a presentation that's an hour and I promise not, it's like eight minutes. Um, but there's some teacher voices here. Um, Frank can run the video and just a couple of pictures. And again, we're happy to talk more like long-term how we're doing about this. This is just to give you a quick snapshot kind of around the holiday this week.
I know that I have a lot of friends and neighbors in the room. And I've been asked by Jen, um, if I can just give kind of a snippet of what I do um, in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. I have an ongoing curriculum where I incorporate, um, different Indigenous. I have an ongoing curriculum where I incorporate um different indigenous principles, I mean mostly First Nations. It's giving names to people that were part of our history that are kind of lost. These little things that we're trying to uncover to re-piece stories together and talk about how stories are put together and what's the bias? And you know, who are the people that are missing from these stories? And how would the story look differently if it were retold with other voices? Um, and that is a big part of how we're even in terms of looking at how we were looking at the Italian Day Parade and looking at Columbus and just talking about how even a holiday, if it's inappropriate, we can rename things. We can give it a different story, a different flavor, you know, tell the truth about a story or tell another truth about the story and put the two stories side by side. So that is basically in a nutshell, and I think I've gone over my time, um, what I am doing in my current classes to remind kids of this, these other people that need to be celebrated in our culture. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betty Beauchamp and I'm the instructional coach for the elementary schools K through five in Winchester. I had the incredible opportunity to share and celebrate some of the amazing contributions and inventions from indigenous people with thirteen classrooms last week. We reenacted games and hobbies inspired by indigenous people and investigated pictures of their many contributions. Students gave thanks to the indigenous people for what they were most grateful for. I personally gave thanks for the chocolate and vanilla beans, tomatoes, avocados, kayaking, snowshoes, lacrosse, ice hockey and field hockey, and the list goes on and on. I was inspired by the curiosity of the educators and students and look forward to continuing to share these important messages as we approach Indigenous Heritage Month and all year long as we continue on our mission to create culturally responsive classrooms. Thank you so much for your support.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Leonard and I teach eighth grade history at McCall. On Friday, I had students explore a variety of resources to gain an understanding of the two perspectives here on the argument of keeping Columbus Day as the holiday or changing it to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So we first started with this NearPod activity, which is an awesome resource. It makes all of your Google Slides interactive where you can add in videos as well as different questions and tasks along the way for, to check for comprehension. The first thing students did was explore this history versus Columbus TED Ed, which is about five minutes. I love this video because the TED Ed resources frames it as a court case. So they put the person in history on trial and you get to see the arguments of both sides. So after watching this video, students had some comprehension questions to ensure their understanding of the video and really think about what they learned in the video itself. After the TED Ed, they were asked to read this primary source excerpt, which helped deepen their understanding of how these early explorers treated the native people. We had another comprehension question after this. After exploring the primary source resource, I asked them to check out this PDF document, the Indian Country Tribal Nations, which has some great infographics as well as uh primary sources from different presidents throughout our history and how they viewed uh Native American societies as well as uh how they viewed their government. So through the exploration of this PDF and some of these infographics, students, the hope was that students had a diff- uh new understanding of the tribal nations throughout our, our country. And there were a few, uh, few follow-up questions. And then another resource that they were asked to read about was an article which a student asked their school committee to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So they read about that to gain perspective from someone their age and actually found a, a problem in their community and worked to address and change that problem. So they explored that and then I asked students to identify whether they believed it should stay Columbus Day or change to Indigenous Peoples' Day and explain their answer. And then just identify on a quick poll whether or not it should change or keep the same. So this is a great quick screenshot to get a sense of where students were at with this question after the NearPod activity. And then um they're taking that knowledge from the NearPod and creating, this is like a task where they're taking on a role to create something new. So in this case, um, the task was that they had been hired as a historical writer. They were creating a secondary task for middle school students and they had to create an accurate book passage about Christopher Columbus. But to keep in mind that books are non-biased, they just try and take the task and create the narrative. So after completing the NearPod and developing their own opinion on this conversation, they were asked to create a passage that accurately described Christopher Columbus and what he did.
Hello, members of the school committee, district administration and members of the Winchester community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Gerhietz and I am the director of the social studies department for grades six through twelve. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to reaffirm the social studies department's commitment to incorporating multiple perspectives into our classrooms at both the middle school and high school levels. Through inquiry-based lessons, document analysis, structured debates, classroom discussion and choice-based performance assessments, our students have the opportunity to explore United States and global history in all of its complexities. The teachers of the department model critical thinking and lifelong learning as they meet both over the summer and during the school year to develop approaches to broaden their students' understandings of the many lenses through which to view historical concepts and topics. In light of yesterday's holiday, as the district and community, as well as communities across the country, continue to consider the implications of recognizing Columbus Day, the importance of recognizing and respecting the many contributions of our country's indigenous population and considering the challenges brought about by the forces of colonialism and empire, please be assured that the students of Winchester are being prepared to thoughtfully engage in this debate as well as future debates and to take the lead in pushing us to recognizing and honoring our common in humanity. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
So these are just a few pictures too shared um by Betty of what the students were doing in the elementary classrooms around um the appreciations of the contributions of indigenous peoples. And uh so I love this little song that they do in one of the classrooms. I don't know if we can blow that up, but certainly we can share this now. Um, but just that recognition of Columbus and the pieces that he brought as well as, you know, the um even starting at the youngest grades, just being clear that he didn't discover America. Um, and although he was a brave explorer, certainly there were already people here and these are people that we honor as well. So um it's a nice way of developmentally scaffolding and addressing this up through eighth grade and then into the high school with other things, so.
Questions or comments from committee members? Thank you very much then, seeing no questions.
Thank you to all the teachers for sharing all that work too. It's always nice to get a glimpse into their rooms.
Exactly. And I'll share that just because we just finished it today with everybody's contributions. So I'll share that PowerPoint with you too.
And seeing the projects and how they're using technology, the various things that you were just talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we didn't even plan that.
Um, so it is eight forty-three, so I will move us on to our final two i- action items, one of which is consideration of the approval of stencils for Lynch. Um, Lynch, the Lynch PA has generously offered to purchase some reusable stencils uh for recess stations and for movement breaks for the students. And these activities will help build teamwork and problem solving and critical thinking. And they sound pretty cool too.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And last item of business is consideration of approval of minutes. And with the help of Dr. Hackett's new administrative assistant, Ms. Erin Allen, we have been working to catch up on the minutes. So we're bringing forward today the minutes for Sep- from September ninth, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth uh meetings for your consideration and approval. Are there any comments? Yes, Mr. Nixon.
So the minutes of the ninth, page two, it's just a minor point, although Ms. Ms. Varbedian from Hill said little at that uh presentation at the high school. The minutes say that she stated that with modulars, bathroom facilities are required and costly. I, I would put a comma there and say, though dry modulars may be installed when adjacent to existing buildings at a lower cost. That was really her point was, I think that was in the context of a question about Parkhurst, am I right?
Yeah, yeah.
So just to add that other element, other, other than that, they look great. Um, and then the, the subsequent minutes, I was gonna ask, I think it was the fourteenth, that Jay Nardone be added to the list of those that were in attendance. There was a long list.
Okay, yep.
The top of the minutes. That's all.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the three sets of minutes as presented. The first two as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, just to comment, this is Erin's first set of minutes. I thought that she did a nice job and saw her with her headphones in watching the, um, the playback from Wind Cam uh quite often. So with so much dialogue and never having done them before, I thought she really did a nice job getting to the, the essence of the meaning. So I appreciate her work.
Very much.
I do have one other question if I may. Ms. Bergstrom abstained from the vote on the Carriage House on the twenty-eighth, but, and you were careful to explain why you were abstaining, Ms. Bergstrom?
Yes.
That's not in the minutes. It just says that you abstained. Is, are you okay with them as, as they are or did you want that to be recorded in the minutes?
Um, I'll talk to Ms. Ballin.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Chair report. Um, all I have to say is that I am going to be preparing the town meeting presentation update for recording on Wind Cam. And once this is prepared, I'll have Dr. Hackett share the presentation with you in advance. And if you have any comments, then please send your comments through him. And Dr. Hackett, anything for the superintendent's report?
Just a few things. Um, first of all, it's, it's, uh, I will tell you that I feel really for the first time sitting here that with a full complement of staff, with everyone that's been hired, that I can already start to see the synergies happening, happening in, in the office. I see um Mr. Rowe working with Andrew Maron. I heard that um there's some questions around your mouse movement and your cursor across two screens that I think Andrew's offered to help you on because apparently it's going in the opposite direction of where you think it's gonna go. But there's just some great conversations, Katerina, with Andrew. Uh, Jen has done a fantastic job bringing that tech group together. I think we've got some, some, just a lot of talent here. Uh, and I know you've always had a lot of talent, but I think just seeing this group together and the way that they're working together um is just been kind of special actually. So I'm really excited about uh where we are going. Um, and that obviously feeds into the conversations we're having around our goals, around our, you know, and where we see ourselves going. And a big piece of that just kind of being the organizational structure and really trying to get good processes in place, which is always a goal of any school system and always reviewing those processes and kind of going back to the lessons learned about how did we operate as a, as an organization uh over the last couple of years? And what have we learned about that and how can we move some of that forward? So uh with all of that, um, I will be actually starting school visits and principal individual meetings this week uh and carrying those out into um obviously the rest of the year. Uh, we're, I think, in a good place now that we can really start to have those conversations around principal goals themselves. Um, kind of tying into what we heard this evening as well. Um, I did want to report that we showed, and when I say we, Andrew, Maron and I went to the um WIFI meeting uh and did share Parent Square, which is a software program, this communication software platform. Um, just because we kind of wanted to get some feedback on it. I, I, the feedback was, I thought, very positive. Uh, I think people can see the potential of it. We, it's a, it's a product that we will bring back to you at a later date, but I just kind of wanted you to know because it has been out there with WIFI that uh we did do that. Um, and kind of looking to see if we can start to begin to roll that out, uh, really in earnest uh at the beginning of the new calendar year. So it kind of gives us a time to ramp up and make sure that uh we have what we need in place. But we, we will be coming back to you uh with some questions around that and, and potentially depending on the actual mechanism for funding, uh potentially some approval questions on it, so. Um, and also just to let you know that I continue to, I've been continuing to meet with the parent associations and uh those um are continuing over the course of the next uh couple of weeks. I, like all of you, it's um, the, the calendar fills up pretty quickly. Uh, and it's amazing, you, you think you've got a, a clear day and then all of a sudden an MSBA or somebody who you can't control their schedule, um, schedules you, um, which is great. But uh it's just things do get knocked around a little bit. But it's been great to meet with Pisk. It's been great to meet with, um, uh, we'll be continuing to meet with the parent association. So I'm looking forward to that. So that is really all I had. I'll just share this one slide. I think um the chair uh kind of hit on this at the beginning of the meeting, but that just gives you a sense of the um weekly safety check testing rollout plan. Obviously this is subject to change. Um, this is in the packet that I did share with you. So you do have access to this, um, this slideshow as well, so. And I would, again, just like they cannot be thanked enough, but Jessica Federman, Jen Murphy and Jim Markham have just been doing a fantastic job. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, future agenda items. So do we have any suggestions from the committee in addition to the future agenda items that we have on our agenda? And seeing none, we are of our next meetings, which will be October twenty-sixth, November ninth, and then November twenty-third, all starting at six PM. And from now, we will be moving into an executive session. And I will just read this, that the committee will adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy related to collective bargaining, since to do so in open session would be detrimental to bargaining. And the committee will reconvene in open session only for the purposes of adjournment. So I would accept.
One amendment, point of information that we also need to discuss potential litigation.
Yes, yep, and that's, yep.
And I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And just to be clear, the potential litigation would not have been known to the chair the time that the agenda was put together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.